I couldn't find that button.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the February twenty first meeting of the Jersey City Planning Board. If we could come to order, and please join me in a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America. All right. Thank you, everybody. Could we have a sunshine announcement, please, Cam?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. Today is Tuesday, February twenty first in the year two thousand and twenty-three. This is a Jersey City Planning Board meeting with a scheduled five thirty P M. Start time. This planning board meeting is being held virtually as a bit of a conference that is open to the public. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this meeting has been given to the editor of the Jersey Journal, the Jersey City Reporter, and posted with the city clerk on bear with me. I got a look. My sunshine notice. February seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three. This meeting was also posted on the Jersey City Division of City Planning webpage, and all distribution materials made available to the board were published and available to the public.
All right. Thank you, Cam. Could we have a roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Okay. Vice Chair, Dr. Gonzalez.
Here.
Commissioner Lipsky.
Here.
Commissioner, Dr. Desai. Commissioner Cruz.
Here.
Commissioner Gangadin.
Here.
Commissioner Green.
Present.
Commissioner Torres.
Yeah.
And Chairman Langston.
Here.
All right, we have a quorum. We have eight commissioners present.
All right. Thank you. Could we swear in the staff, please, Mike?
All right, I see Liz, Matt, Tim, Cameron. Do you guys want any testimony to give tonight? It's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Cam. Do we have any correspondence?
Yes, Chair, we do. We have five items requesting to carry. First item on the agenda among those five is item twenty-one on the agenda. That is case number P twenty-two dash one five nine. Address is one forty-five Industrial Drive. This is a preliminary final major site plan with C variances. Case number P twenty-two dash one five nine. They have requested to carry with preservation of notice to our next regularly scheduled meeting, which is March ninth, two thousand and twenty-three. Next, also requesting to carry to March ninth is item twenty-two on the agenda, and that is case P twenty-two dash two zero one. Address is one seventy-nine Academy Street, also for preliminary and final major site. Oh, this one's an amendment. So this is a preliminary final major site plan amendment. They have requested to carry to March ninth. That is with.
Cameron, could we double check that date? March ninth is a Thursday.
Oh, my gosh. I'm sorry. You are absolutely correct. That is the zoning board meeting day. So let's rewind. My apologies, everyone. That is item twenty-one on the agenda. They are requesting to carry to March seventh. Again, that is March seventh with preservation of notice. That is address one forty-five Industrial Drive. They are requesting to carry to March seventh with preservation of notice. Thank you, Santo. Next item, twenty-two, one seventy-nine Academy Street, requesting to carry with preservation of notice to March seventh. Item twenty-three, thirty-nine High Street Preliminary and Final Major Site Plan Amendment. Requesting to carry to March seventh with preservation of notice. Item twenty-five, case P twenty-three dash zero one four. This is for preliminary and final major site plan with C variances. The address is seventy-eight Bishop Street. This is, they are requesting to carry to March seventh with preservation of notice. And then following that, item twenty-six on the agenda. Case is case number P twenty-two dash one four eight. Address is six two six Summit Avenue. They are requesting to carry to March seventh with preservation of notice. So again, that's items twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-five, and twenty-six. Five items there have all requested to carry to March seventh. And that is again our next regularly scheduled planning board meeting, five thirty P M. Start time.
All right. Thanks, Cam. Okay, so just for the public's information, when Cameron says with preservation of notice, does that refers to the notice that you got in the mail? If you receive notices for any of those applications, you will not get new notice. Those, this is your notice that those cases will be heard on that day. I do see, I see a couple of hands raised. I don't know, Cam, can you reach out to anybody offline? Do you know?
I'd be, I'm not quite sure what they're raising their hands about. I would advise them to contact the review planner assigned to that case, and they can, you know, reach out to planning staff.
Okay, do we want to bring up Mr. Paulino, or are we gonna hear from him in a couple of minutes?
We should bring him up just in case he didn't agree to carry one of those matters.
Okay.
Promoted Jean Polino.
Okay.
Counsel, how are you?
Good. How are you? How are you? I, I'm sorry, did, was a matter, Harry, that I had? I'm not sure I saw that.
No, but you raised your hand, counsel. Good evening.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to do that. It was, it was raised before I did anything, and so I just lowered it.
Okay, counsel, we are gonna get to you shortly. I do have a section thirty-one that we want to hear real quick before we get to you. But we'll get to you right after that. Okay, so on the adjournments, we do have one case. This case P two-two dash one six three is a preliminary and final major site plan for thirty seventy-nine JFK Boulevard. That is going to be carried to a date, date uncertain. If you receive notice for that, you will get new notice. That will not be heard tonight. So that being said, we are.
So Chairman, that matter's adjourned. It's not actually carried because we don't have a date to carry it to.
Understood.
Whenever that gets relisted, notice will be sent according to law. It may be the next meeting. It may not be until April, May, June. Who knows? It may never come back.
Okay, so we are gonna run down the list real quick to item seventeen. Let's say section thirty-one review for fourteen Eno's Place. That case number is P two-three dash zero one eight.
Promoting John Curly.
Hello, John. We can see you. You have the floor.
Yeah, also, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Curly. Can you hear us?
Excuse me, did I hear you?
Okay, we can hear you. We can see you. Can you hear us?
Yes.
Beautiful. Mr. Curly, can you get all of your team either to raise their hands or?
Well, we have two experts, Mr. Poliniak and Mr. Rosenberg. If they would raise their hands, they could join us.
End up, let's get him promoted. And Poliniak, you said?
Pol- Poliniak, yes.
His full name, please, or can you spell that?
P O L Y N I A K.
There's no one in the audience with that.
Yeah, I don't see him in attendance. Does he maybe, what firm is he from?
If he's not present, I would go forward with Ralph Rosenberg, who is present.
Mr. Curly, is that Greg Poliniak from Neglia Engineering?
Yes, it is.
I didn't see Mr. Poliniak's name, but if somebody from Neglia is filling in for Mr. Poliniak, if they could raise their hand in the meantime, we can at least move forward with Mr. Rosenberg if that's how you want to proceed, Mr. Curly.
That's satisfactory.
Okay, counsel. Let's get Mr. Rosenberg sworn in and qualified, and then we can, we can get going here.
All right. Hi, Ralph. I'll swear in if you could raise your hand. Do you swear any testimony to give tonight? It's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And for the record, could you state your name, please?
Yes, Ralph Rosenberg, R O S E N B E R G.
Thank you.
Mr. Rosenberg, good evening. How are you testifying in front of us tonight?
I'm representing NK Architects, the architects of the Hudson County Tower.
Okay, and are you a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you. You would be qualified, then.
Thank you. In opening, I would just like to state for the board that the proposed project of the Hudson County Community College is part of their Journal Square campus. The board is being asked to exercise its referral jurisdiction to examine plans and projects where there are capital expenditures and to give recommendations with respect to the project. Mr. Rosenblum will testify as to the architectural plans and his familiarity with the site. And I'm hoping that Mr. Poliniak or his substitute does appear before we are finished. But I had not received any communication that he would be delayed. So what I would suggest is that we go forward with Mr. Rosenberg. Mr. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Are you familiar with the proposed project?
Yes, I am.
Can you describe the existing conditions and the proposed project?
Can I share my screen, Mr. Curly?
Yes, if that would aid you with making the presentation, yes.
I think it would help. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, how is the screen to be shared here?
Um. Mr. Rosenberg should have permission to, to.
He should have permission. There should be, I believe it's down on the bottom center.
Yes. It was on the screen, but I'm gonna try it again because.
Sometimes there is a delay due to the size of the plants.
Anything on your side?
No, we don't see. There you go. You got it now.
Got it. This is the third try. Third charge the charm. Okay, um. This is the planning was submission set. It does consist of the front pages of Neglia Engineering, but I think I will skip through that if if that's okay with the board. Maybe I could come back to that if, if need be. The first architectural exhibit does start at A one point oh one. And real general, the project is a mixed-use academic building, approximately one hundred and fifty thousand square feet, twelve stories, about one hundred and eighty-one feet tall. It has a two-story main lobby entrance on Eno's Place. That's to the left. It's the side street off of Sip Avenue. And it extends through the block to Jones Street. A big component of this project is a two is a full-size gymnasium. It has a second floor running track as well, and it has direct access from the grand second two-story lobby of Eno's Place that will give the building easy and direct access for security after use functions after college use. As the plan rises up on the third level, there is a large student commons that, sorry, on the fourth level, there's a large student commons that sits on top of the full-size gymnasium. It has an outdoor terrace. It also communicates both for academic students and faculty as a gathering place for the building. As the building rises up, it's a mix of classrooms and supporting academic spaces and offices that shed throughout the tower from the ground floor all the way up to floor number ten. On the eleventh floor is a shared suite for the president's office, his executive assistants, and the public boardroom floors on floor eleven. The building tops off at the twelfth floor, which is a partial mechanical penthouse of all the necessary services for the building below. The building aesthetically is designed with the combination of terracotta rainscreen panels, metal panel, glass curtain wall, and appropriate sunscreen blades and louvers. The bottom one story of the building is clad in a charcoal granite from Eno's Place through the block back to Jones Street. Mr. Curly, that, that sort of sums up the building core and shell.
Has this building been designed to fit in with the Journal Square redevelopment plan?
Yes, it has. Under the zone foray, it is a community mixed use for the neighborhood as well as for Hudson County Community College. It's an urban design in its context. It does cover about eight parking spaces, and it has, again, direct access from Jones Street and Eno's Place with the cross-cut through for easy pedestrian circulation.
Can you testify to an opinion that the project is substantially consistent with the master plan of the city?
Yes, I can. It fits perfect with the redevelopment plan for Journal Square. And it's, it's a good neighbor contextually and aesthetically for the neighborhood.
I'd like you to mention the parking and bike storage as part of the architectural plan.
Let me go back a couple of exhibits, Mr. Curly. I can scroll back. The parking is, it's partially from a covered gymnasium above. We have about eight parking spaces. We've kicked around several locations for the bike rack and storage. And I think we've left it where the appropriate bike rack and bike storage will be located someplace off of Jones Street, which we will work with planning and city zoning, as well as down the side cut through small, linear pedestrian park for the students. So the bike rack is yet to be, is yet to be located. It's just going to be a collaboration of city comments and Hudson County Community College comments as well. But it will be located on the corner of Eno's Place and down this cut through pedestrian park to Jones Street.
And just in passing, where is this property in relation to the Journal Square Transportation Center?
Yeah, let me, let me go back a couple more exhibits.
Right across the street.
Yeah. Again, a point of orientation.
I have no further.
This is Eno's Place across, you know, across the, the top of the page, and this is Sip Avenue directly across Sip Avenue to the top right is the Journal Square path station. Directly across from this Eno's Place is the two high-rises. They're about to come out of the ground, the two sixty-five-story glass high-rises in Journal Square proper. So we have a one block in, half of a block into the south, and the front door of our campus sits right here with the bend in the road. This is the existing survey of the existing surface parking lot for the college.
I have no further questions.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Rosenberg. I have no questions. Anybody else from the board on a section thirty-one review?
Nope. No, no.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Mr. Curly, anything else?
Uh, no, I, I think that Mr. Rosa Bloom has effectively covered what Mr. Poliniak was going to testify to. So I think it's a complete presentation has been made.
Okay, thank you, sir. And just for, you know, anybody's information out there, section thirty-one review is very different from a site plan. The, it's basically a courtesy review. The board really just, you know, gives any recommendation they want to give. Our vote is not binding. We simply state whether it meets the goals and objectives of the master plan and the zone plan. So at this time, that's why we do such a short presentation for those. So at this time, let's open it up for public comment. If anybody's here from the public that wants to comment on this section thirty-one review, please raise your hand.
Chair, seeing no one from the public wishing to speak.
There's, there's a hand up already there, Steve.
Promoting Jean Daly.
Okay.
I appreciate your enthusiasm, though.
I appreciate your eyesight.
Hi, Jean. I'll swear in. Do you swear any testimony to give tonight? It's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And for the record, could you state your name and give us your home address, please?
Yes, Jean Daly. It's spelled J E A N N E D A L Y.
Address, please.
My address, oh, one one zero Sussex Street, Jersey City.
Thank you. Ms. Daly, good evening. We have three minutes for you.
Perfect. You know, my, my, I'm familiar with what a section thirty-one review is, and I know what it means and the consequences of such a thing. But has a a city planner been presented by the, the, those that are seeking approval to demonstrate exactly how it complies with the Jersey City Master Plan? I mean, having general statements and asking this board to just accept them, I find a little concerning because I, I believe that this, the applicant should be have a city planner who goes step by step and says how actually it does comport with the master plan instead of leaving it into the boards, you know, discretion as whether they approve it or not. So has there been any planning or has there been any articulation exactly how it adheres to the master plan?
Uh, Tanya, that's your ballpark. I don't know if Tanya is on right now.
I think she was at the caucus meeting.
I, I'm on, Chairman.
Okay.
And I have reviewed these plans that were submitted to city planning and did review them and, and can states that we would agree with the testimony put on the record that it comports with the master plan. There are several ways that it does. We have not prepared a report for this hearing. But there, it would meet several of the goals and objectives of the master plan.
Sure. And Ms. Daly, we always, we always go back for planning comment after public comment. But we.
Okay, your comment. Okay, because, again, the goal is to articulate precisely how. And the thing is, without that articulation, a member of the public like myself cannot challenge the claims made by both the planning board and the applicant. So I, I just find it lacking in some way, and I really hope the planning board would change their method in the future.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Daly. We appreciate your comment. All right, anybody else from public? If you'd like to comment on the section thirty-one, please raise your hand. If you are calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hand.
In no public, I'm going to close the public.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and second. If public is closed. Okay, Matt, let's get city planning's take on this then.
Sure, I, I mean, I responding to Mrs. Daly's comments, we will certainly consider moving forward with a report on the next section thirty-one. Off the top of my head and from recollection, I would say that this does meet several goals and objectives of the master plan, one being to, a goal to create an equitable city. They put on the record that this would not only be open to Hudson County Community College students, but also to the general public. It also solely for that fact, I would say that it also helps toward, meet us, pushes forward toward a goal of creating a fifteen-minute city. There is immense sort of amenities in here as, in, in, in respect to the gym and the double-height space with the walking track. There is even a black box theater in this, this space. So there'll be cultural amenities or venues as well that would hopefully be open to the general public. Staff agrees with the testimony that they put on the record. This does comport with the master plan.
All right. Thank you, Matt, and I would entertain a motion at this time.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the case P two-three dash zero one eight as it was presented to the board here tonight.
Second.
Okay, motion made and second for approval.
Vice Chair, Dr. Gonzalez.
I think this is easy. This, you know, looks like it meets the goals and objectives of, and is consistent with the master plan as it relates to the Journal Square twenty sixty redevelopment plan. I vote aye.
Commissioner Lipsky.
Uh, tack of Dr. Gonzalez's words also will fit in between a senior living facility and the already established, well, Hudson County Community College building. I vote aye.
Commissioner, Dr. Desai.
I vote aye.
Commissioner.
I vote aye.
Commissioner Gangadin.
Again, this meet the goals and objectives of the master plan. I vote aye.
Commissioner Green.
Aye.
Commissioner Torres.
I vote aye.
And Chairman Langston.
So as the other commissioners said, this does meet the goals and objectives of the master plan. And I certainly can support this going forward, and I vote aye.
Okay, motion carries all in favor with a favorable recommendation for vote by city council.
Okay, thank you. All right, so let's move on to item eight. Actually, we do have one thing to address real quick.
Can I just, just put on the record?
Can I just, uh, just put on the record, this does not go to city council. Uh, that's for an ordinance. Uh, just, I know that we might have just been in a uh, I don't know, the zone there, but, uh, does not, city council, just for the general public. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Matt. Um, Matt, am I, that, uh, item twenty-seven is being carried as well?
Uh, I'm sorry, you broke up for me for a moment there. What was that?
Uh, item twenty-seven is being carried also, one fifty-two Ogden Street. I'm, I'm sorry, Ogden Avenue?
Yes, that's being carried. It's.
Okay.
Yeah.
And there's no date certain?
No, there's no date certain currently.
Okay, um, yeah.
It was, it shouldn't have been on the agenda. I think it's a misprint.
Okay, uh, so, uh, item twenty-seven on the agenda is case P two, two, dash, one, four, oh, is a preliminary and final major site plan for one fifty-two Ogden Avenue. Uh, that's being carried to a date. I'm sorry, that's being adjourned currently. Uh, we do not have a date that that's coming back to us, and, uh, I apologize that, uh, I was just told that this shouldn't have been on the agenda tonight. So, uh, I apologize to anybody that came in for that, uh, item. Um, okay, so let's go back to Mr. Palino, uh, case P two, two, dash, zero, eight, zero is a preliminary and final major site plan amendment for one thirty-six Summit Avenue. Uh, testimony was taken both on August ninth of twenty-twenty-two and January twenty-fourth of twenty-twenty-three. Uh, this is an open matter, and, uh, notice was preserved on this.
Good evening, thank you. Uh, uh, I'm going to thank the board, uh, for hearing this tonight. Uh, I know that you've heard it twice before. Uh, and I'd like to also thank, uh, Chairman Langston and Commissioner Torres and Commissioner Lipsky for doing an inside, uh, onsite, uh, visit. That was, I hope, helpful. So, if I could begin the, the matter scheduled before the board on August nine and twenty-two and January twenty-four, twenty-three. I, I was unfortunately not at the last meeting for personal reason, and, um, I'm happy to be here with you today. Um, you've heard on, in August, the testimony of Adam Kushner, who was the architect of record on this project. On the meeting of, uh, uh, January twenty-fourth, I also had a consulting architect. Um, both Mr. Kushner and Mr. Garber are here tonight in case, uh, either of their testimony, uh, is necessary. The, I know you have a large agenda, uh, and, and I would like, uh, Mr. Garber to share his perspective going through, uh, I think it's, uh, a four exhibit that was, uh, presented at the January meeting. Um, but I'd like to know your disposition with respect to that, uh, and giving Mr. Garber and me a short time to, uh, uh, present something from, from Mr. Garber's, uh, consultations with my client. I'd like to be able to, I'd like to point out and put in context that the the building that you've heard much about, and some of you have seen, uh, is, is an unusual building. It's unusual for me in that, uh, as I see it is that it, it encompasses, uh, large rooms. Uh, I think there are mostly, uh, two bedrooms and three bedrooms, uh, among the ninety-nine units in this nine-story building. There is, uh, it's a great addition, we believe, to the neighborhood, and I also want to place in context the fact that uh, I think it's kind of category, catacorne, cata tactic. Uh, it's, it's opposite the, uh, the building. There's a park and, uh, catty corner, opposite the park, and there's a park, and, uh, that Rabbi Halberstam, who was the, uh, prince, principal of Park, uh, Howl, uh, had a hand in providing that park. Um, there was, uh, there was a monetary contribution to that, uh, to that park already. There are no changes to the unit count. You know that already, uh, no changes to di- to density, and there are no deviations requested here. But as you do know, there were, um, uh, a, a bunch of changes. I've had an opportunity over the last couple of months to, to kind of, uh, try to sift through what these changes are and clarify them for everyone, and it seems to me that, and, and I put it to you, that many of the changes are a function of my clients, uh, and perhaps my uh, attention to detail here. I mean, we have changes that are very small, that are the board, minor in nature, no magnets on a door, for instance, that would be an example of this. Or change in, uh, a, a, a door from, uh, from six feet to six inches to, to one foot. I mean, it, it, there, there are really minor changes here. But there are other larger changes, and, uh, you know the history of this, that we have. We came before you as quickly as at least I found out about it, and, and, uh, and, uh, the, the miscommunication that led to this was unfortunate, but it has not been repeated. Uh, you know, my client had another matter before this board relatively recently, and did it in the classically correct way. Had changes came before the changes were made, before the, even the building was started, came and it requested that the changes be done. So, uh, I think, uh, to the extent that anyone can learn their lesson, um, they did. Um, so, uh, I, I, I ask you to keep an open mind here. I ask you to think of the amount of work that actually went into this building, and I hope that at least the three commissioners, and I'm sure the other commissioners, who, uh, looked at the building in depth, saw that there was a tremendous amount of work that was done here, uh, and I think it's good work. I think this building by and large presents what it was meant to present to, to the board. Um, so I'd like an opportunity to have Mr. Garber come and go through, uh, quickly, because I know you have a heavy agenda. The, um, uh, his findings, his look at the building, and it may help you refresh your recollection. Uh, it may help the other board members recall, uh, this building, although, no, we did have an opportunity, and I won't, I won't, uh, make little of it to, you know, speak about it, uh, twice before. So you've spent some time on this one, and I know that, and I appreciate it. Um, so, uh, with that, I would call Mr. Garber for, uh, before the board.
So, Mr. Polino, why don't we do this? Because the matter was presented, and then, uh, there were some issues and questions regarding what these changes were and how they were maybe identified.
Right.
And that obviously is the reason why the site inspection, uh, went forward. So, Chairman, perhaps you would like to tell us how you want the testimony to proceed as far as, obviously, the two different architects. You went to the site, you were able to see what you, uh, wanted to see. So I think some guidance from, from you and the board is, is the most appropriate way to proceed.
Sure.
You don't waste.
So.
I have to, let me, let me hasten to add that Santo correctly interpreted what I was trying, obviously badly, to say, which is that I, I, I do, I do would like your, the disposition of, of the chairman and the board as to how this presentation should proceed.
So, just for the record, yeah, we did do, uh, a site visit. Um, I believe it was February sixth was the date. Uh, I was there with Commissioner Torres in the afternoon. Uh, we were given a tour by, uh, your colleague, Gene, uh, George Bazillo, and, uh, Mr. Kushner was present, and, uh, several members from the applicant's team. Um, Commissioner Lipsky followed, uh, shortly after us. We didn't run into each other at the time. Uh, but, um, I believe his, uh, tour was given by you, and, uh, I would assume Mr. Kushner and the same principals, uh, for the applicant, if I'm, uh, correct. Um, we went over the changes that were made. Um, I do have to say that you, you know, maybe I'm getting up in years, and, um, it's just, you know, I do read blueprints for a living, but this was a lot, and, um, you know, seeing it in person was a completely different experience than, uh, digging through these plans and trying to, uh, find these changes, um. So, yeah, I have a completely different view of this tonight. Uh, so, Gene, to go, uh, back to your first question, um, my disposition tonight, uh, although I had a day, but, um, my disposition is very done right now, and, uh, let's, um, if you want to bring up Mr. Garber, go through some of the changes. I don't think, uh, we really let Mr. Garber finish his presentation last time, but you know, for the rest of the board that wasn't there, uh, maybe go through some of the changes, um, explain a few things, and, uh, let's all move on with our lives tonight.
I, I appreciate that.
And, uh,
Not to interrupt Mr. Polino, but are there certain changes in your mind based on what you saw that are substantial in nature, that are ten or five or fifteen that Mr. Gerber could take us through and highlight versus, I don't want to sit here and listen to magnets on doors. I don't.
Sure. No, we, th- those things weren't even discussed. Something minor like that wasn't discussed. Um, the, the big one for me is, you know, the change in the balconies, um, the, trying to think what else. Uh, there were some.
facade, uh.
Penestration change, pattern.
Yeah, yeah, there were, there were patterns changed. There were, um, you know, PSD.
So, I guess, Mr. Garber is going to know exactly which points they came.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, I think, uh, let's hit the, the major bullet points, and, um, you know, like I said, I, I have a completely different view of this tonight. Um, so.
Commissioner Chairman, this is Commissioner Torres. Right, this, uh, we have one thing real quick before we move on. Um, if it's, if I'm, if I'm not out of order, uh, just let me know, uh, counsel. Um, but I do agree with you, um, reading blueprints for a living, uh, back in August, this was a mess.
Yeah.
It was all over the place.
Agreed.
You had us looking at too many things, too many different components, and I was one that was very objective to this because I was looking at too many different devices and reading blueprints for a living. I couldn't follow anything. Uh, the second time when Mr. Garner came on board, there was a little better structure. And I think that structure that we're going to see now is of, for the members that could not make it to a walkthrough, would be very fair for them to follow and understand what's going on, so. Um, I, I think we well enough cleared that up. Uh, the confusing part, and I feel that, uh, as a board member, for my fellow board members that wouldn't be able to attend that day, as a visual, would still be able to follow this presentation, uh, and the way it was given to us that day when we did, I was also glad to attend, and I want to honor, recognize, uh, Chairman Langston for the suggestion. It was an awesome suggestion, and it made a lot of clarity to everything. But, uh, I do feel, feel very comfortable that my fellow commissioners that were present that day will be able to follow this and make their own decision very clearly now. That's what I want to put that on.
Agreed, and, um, just, uh, another point of clarity, um, given that these changes were made already, we've been through the wringer on this numerous times, and this board, um, doesn't have the ability to punish an applicant. That's not what we're here to do. We're treating this, and we treat all these things as a site plan amendment. Um, whether they were built already or not built already, that's not for this board to decide. Uh, we're not, we have no, you know, way of taking action against an applicant. That is the building department, so you know, just from a sense of clarity for the board, um, you know, we treat these things just like they're on paper at this point. Um, so that, that's how we have to approach these things, um. So, that being said, let's, uh, bring up Mr. Garber.
One more, uh, piece of housekeeping, uh, chairman and, and, um, council. Uh, so we have, uh, I, I know that Commissioner Dr. Desai has already, um, stated at the last meeting that she is not up to speed on this application, so, so she will not be part of the vote. And I just wanted to ask if Ms., Commissioner Green, um, has reviewed, um, the, the past hearings, um, or if not, then if, uh, if she could, um, abstain from voting or recuse.
I'm gonna abstain.
All right. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner.
So, Mr. Polino, I believe if I'm reading the screen correctly, that gives you five voting members as we proceed, just, just so we're all clear.
Well, we had eight, and two have recused, so is that six?
Yes, we have, I think we have six.
Very good, six.
Okay, um, I, I think we should proceed. I mean, we've, we've done this enough.
I just wanted to be clear as to.
Yeah, no, no, I, I, I got it. I understand, Santo. I, I, I appreciate that. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you, counsel.
Mr. Garber, perhaps you can, you can start, and as, as I said, I, I, I assume chairman, uh, without wanting to restrict our testimony, that, that the necessity here is to hit the high points.
Of course, and, uh, just for the record, Mr. Garber did testify at our January twenty-fourth meeting. Um, so let's bring him up again and, uh, qualify him and swear him in once again.
All right, Richard, I'll swear in. Do you swear any testimony tonight? It's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
For the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
Richard Garber, G A R B E R.
Thank you.
Mr. Garber, good evening. We've qualified you in the past. Uh, your license is current tonight?
It is, Chairman Langston. Yes, thank you for asking.
Thank you, sir. You are qualified and sworn in. Uh, let's see your presentation.
Great, and I will try to be as succinct as possible. There is a bit of information here, and, uh, I want to thank the board for allowing me to do this. I'm, uh, kind of coming in as a third party here who has objectively looked at this and, um, consulted with both the owner, uh, who was a client of mine as well, uh, as well as Mr. Palino and his team. Uh, so I'm going to start with actually some photos that were taken of the building, uh, today. And these are, uh, pretty raw photos. We, we perspective corrected them a little bit, but they're, they're beautiful photos of, of the building as it stands, and the board members will recall that, uh, that visited, that this is, um, the building that they saw now.
So, Mr. Garber, I hate to interrupt you already. I had A one and A two.
We have, we have four exhibits, uh, Santo, A one, A two, A three, and A four. This would be.
We've already marked the notice, and the last slide presentation from prior hearings is A one and A two.
Right, and I think in, in January, we marked A three and A four, the architectural presentation that Mr. Garber is now giving.
But he just said this photo was today.
Then, so these, uh, these photos are, the photos only.
Yeah, but I, I mean, if it makes sense, we could just, I mean, this is the same presentation as the twenty-first with the exception of six added photos. We can mark it as a, as, as another exhibit if you want. That's fine.
Let's just. Can we mark the six photos as A five to keep it clean?
Sure, and I'll, I'll break it out. No problem. I'll send you two different files. So you'll have A five, which are the photos, and the PowerPoint will remain.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Garber. And, uh, just for the record, it is the original PowerPoint that you, uh, were trying, we're trying to present on the twenty-fourth.
I did change the date to today, but I'll make sure you get the elder, the old one. It's the same.
Okay, perfect, okay.
Um, so photos, and, and so you see that there's a mix of materials on the exterior of the building. Um, and I'm going to go through those materials. This is a view that, um, is not fully visible from the street. This was a drone photo, uh, but the, um, uh, the, the balconies are articulated, are seen here as linear. They go up stacked, and that's something that we're going to talk about in particular. Uh, that is one of these kind of so-called larger items that the board wanted to hear from. Uh, another view of those balconies. Uh, another view of the, the building, which is, um, substantially complete at this point. Um, and, uh, those are, uh, are the photos. Now, in terms of what we did to try to clarify this, and I think a lot of this has fortunately been clarified by the, since. In terms of what we did to try to clarify this, and I think a lot of this has fortunately been clarified by the since since we were last before the board. Is we, uh, dug into the drawings, we, uh, made some site visits, um, primarily concerned with the exterior of the building. Uh, and we really created two different models, what we referred to as an approved model, right, which is what you see on your left. And what we call it a proposed model, and the approved model is what the board has approved, what the drawings, uh, dictate. And then the proposed model is, uh, what was built, and I know that's a a little bit of a funky distinction, but but it's, um, sort of where we find ourselves, and I'm gonna try to. Maintain, um, approved and proposed, uh, through the presentation. Uh, this is another view of that, and again, I'm gonna take you through again. Now. There are eight locations that we have isolated. I'm gonna do this fast, but I wanna. For the record, just get these eight locations. They're all on the elevations, and the reason why there are eight is because, as you know from these views, that the building. Actually has more than four sides. It's not a box, right? It it has some feature to it, uh, in terms of its shape. It's curvilinear. Um, at the front, it it actually steps back a little bit, and you can see those those things here. We're not. Here to talk about the the envelope of the building, which is met per intent. Uh, but there are some features on the building that that, um, that have changed. So eight locations and they're labeled here. You see the first five here. One is the proposed Fairmont elevation. Two is the proposed proposed Clifton elevation. Three, we're calling courtyard elevation one. Four, we're calling courtyard elevation two. Uh, then we have a lot line elevation one. And then finally, our lot line elevation two, which is the rear of the building. Um, and then Summit Avenue elevations, uh, one and Summit Avenue elevations two. I know that sounds like a lot. But we're gonna make sure that that everyone understands what we're doing. So, uh, again, I'm gonna just show the first five. We're gonna first focus on item one. Which is the Fairmont elevation, right? And so, um, this is how I'm going to do this. I'm gonna break down all the approved and the proposed or as-built condition. And you can see line drawings and you can see the materials. Now, primarily here. The the main change here is that what was, uh, originally, uh, uh, um. Uh, dictated as high-density laminated timber, which is the the wood-looking material. Has been replaced with a wood-finished ceramic tile. Now, the tone and color is very, very close. Um, however, it is a different material, and that's something that's noted on plan, so it's 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 something that I bring up here. Um, uh, and, um, so that would finish.
Excuse me, let me let me interrupt you, Richard. I'm sorry to do that. I think it's the reverse. I think it I think it began with ceramic.
Sorry, sorry, the wood, I'm sorry, the wood, the the high density, and I'm I'm just reading from a note, the the high-density laminated timber has replaced. That's right, finished ceramic tile. I'm sorry if I I said that wrong. Thank you, Gene. Um, so high-density laminated timber, so the wood. The wood finish is actually achieved in wood, which I actually find to be 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 more true to the material. Now, there is, and I think everyone can see my 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 mouse, hopefully, where's my mouse? Um, that we have, um, a stucco banding on the top of the building. That was, uh, originally two tones, uh, a kind of horizontal tone that was darker and then a vertical tone that was lighter. That is now all a singular finish. The color is light gray. Uh, so the banding that was originally approved has been changed. It's still a stucco finish. But instead of two-tone, it is a single-tone, light gray. Um, uh, and and so that's something that you're gonna see, uh, repeat quite a lot. That's a a kind of feature of the building. Um, additionally. We have at the base. Um. A honed Jerusalem stone that was originally specified that has now been replaced with a cast stone. Adobe finish, and you can see that, um, cast stone, adobe finish. Uh, I just find it here. Uh, which is here, material O seven, has replaced the, um, Jerusalem flame stone, which is a little bit darker of a home. Right? I think it's still a a handsome material, and you'll see some photos of that in the next slide. So those are material changes. Uh, primarily, and you can see here that, um, in that base of the building. Those conditions and then some some photos and and what we've done is tried to zoom into these photos, but this is the area that we're talking about where that replacement. Has, um, occurred. Um, following, we have the plinth view of the building and the print plinth view of the building. Um, this, the main difference is the height of transoms. So in the approved, uh, uh, drawings, the approved by the board drawings. The transoms, which are at the top of these, uh, windows, uh, go all the way up to the top of the. Um, the material line here, right? The finished second floor. In reality, the as-built condition, they're dropped slightly. And, uh, it's a minor distinction, but, uh, I we just want to make sure that the board kind of understands. Uh, there's nothing really significant in this change. There's still natural light flowing into the building and stuff. Uh, there may be slightly less, but it's it's, um, de minimis, and I think on a on a sha- shadowy day, this building is gonna cast some shadows. Uh, that's something that's not even going to really, um, be seen. You will notice that there is a modest change in the door spacing here as well. If you count like these two happen to be closer together than these two, so these are the the proposed or as-built condition is more, um, equal equidistant. Um, the material is still a slate tile that has not changed, right? And to continue going through this, so this is the the main facade portion. Um, of Fairmont, and that's where the, um, high-density laminated timber has replaced the wood finish. Uh, ceramic tile that was originally proposed, um, the patterning has not changed, right? And that's the main part of the facade. And then finally, I mentioned the top of of this already, um, enlarged views that the original, uh, the original, uh, approved drawing show a kind of banding here. Horizontal banding. In reality, the finished condition now, the as-built or proposed condition before the board is a, uh, single-tone. Uh, light gray, uh, stucco, and so that's that. So I'm gonna keep moving unless there are questions. So this is kind of how I'm trying to draw these distinctions. Um, Gene, should I continue?
Keep, keep, keep moving unless there are questions.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Um. Now, this is another one of the large elevations, so so this is the Clifton Place elevation, and again. Um, the changes that I'm gonna speak about are basically, um, very similar to what I I went through. So the stucco banding on the top. Uh, and and on this side is now, uh, consistent light gray stucco. The honed Jerusalem stone at the base has been replaced with a cast stone adobe finish. The window patterning at the base has, uh, has been varied, uh, slightly. Where you see we have transom and then pair of windows here, when in reality, this pattern is sort of like a double transom and then a square window. But more or less, the windows are, um, in the same location with the exception of this double window here. That has been replaced with a single so that these windows at the base are equidistant. Um, and then finally, windows on either side of the garage. Have been, uh, removed, right? So those are the the primary changes on this elevation. And then we have here, we're gonna go from the base up, just like we did last time. This is where you see those two windows. Um, being removed. They're not here, um, in the, um, in the proposed condition. Um, in terms of the plant, which is just above that base, again, here, um, this is the the middle section. Uh, the height of the transoms again has been reduced, uh, modestly. Um, so that that material continues, uh, just modestly above. Again, I would argue that there's only a de minimis, uh, decrease in light. Um, the material at this section is primarily a slate tile veneer as originally proposed, so that's been maintained. Um, moving up the building, again, this is that main body, and so this is where, um, the stucco banding has been replaced. Talked about that, and the high-density laminated timber, uh, wood product has replaced the wood ceramic tiles that were originally. Uh, specified, and then, uh, there's a couple of locations here where you have a gang of four windows. That have just been split to a pair of windows, so that's just a window patterning in the facade, uh, that, uh, that that, um. Again, was changed, and I'm just drawing the board's attention to, uh, calling the board's attention to to this stuff. Uh, in terms of the top views on Clifton, again, stucco banding, right? So it's 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 primarily, uh, the two-tone stucco being replaced. By a single-tone stucco. In this case, the windows, um, are, um, are in the approximate locations as as dictated. Um, courtyard elevations, this is one where, um, you know, in in following, um, Mr. Langston's logic. Uh, as well, uh, as as well as the board council, uh, is is something that we should draw the the the, um, the attention to, and that's that. There are these trapezoidal windows. That, uh, that exist here. Now, this is not a view on the street. Are you, it's, you really have to be like looking at the building to see this. This is not one of the main facades of the building. This is tucked in. Um, and as far as I can tell, there was some, um, structural trust work. That was was put in here that wasn't coordinated with the original drawings, and so, um, once those trusses were in. Um, I think the G C and ownership team realized that they'd have glass in front of a structural trust, so instead, um, uh, without telling us, but whatever. They they thought it was, uh, an idea to to actually have these windows remade in this kind of trapezoidal, uh, shape. And so that's what I would suggest is a, um, you know, one of the more significant changes that the board has to to think about. Um, this original elevation was not in the planning board drawings. I should also say that. So this is something that we are. Volunteering to the board now to kind of understand on the exterior of the building as we've, um, as we've done this field inspection. Um, so to speak. Other than that, it's primarily the banding of, uh, light gray. Uh, on, uh, on this, um, on the, uh, on the proposed, uh, uh, as, uh, as built condition has has just gone to a single tone. Um, moving forward, um, we do have a a base condition at the courtyard, and, uh, this elevation view again was not. Shown to the board primarily, but was included in the construction permit set, uh, so we created these drawings based on those plans. Um, and so what you see is a a single, um, a single window has been installed. Where there was previously a double door, so this double door is now a single window. Um, and that door did not really provide any access as far as we know, so, um, it makes sense that it was a window. There is a public yard that's accessed. Through a lobby corridor, um, which I think was what this door was originally shown for. Um, uh, so this is, uh, fairly, um, straightforward, and again, there is still an opening. It's just now a window instead of a door. Um. Before we get to the balconies and you can start seeing the balconies here, this is the enlarged courtyard main elevation three. Uh, we have a photo of it under scaffolding here. This is basically just that two-tone striping that I talked about has been replaced now. With a single light gray stucco. Um, main elevation four, this is the trapezoidal windows that I spoke about, as well as that two-tone banding versus single-tone banning, and you can. See by, maybe I can zoom in here, maybe maybe I don't have to zoom in for now, but the the two-tone window, that excuse me, the trapezoidal windows. Are, uh, behind the scaffolding here, but look something like this in the model, something like this in the elevation. Now, where we do have, and now we're later in the presentation, trying to move through this quickly. Um, these are some of those side elevations that I showed in that those original photos where there are. Changes to the balconies, and primarily what you see here is that, um. Uh, we do have the stucco banding, right? So the the two-tone banding goes to 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 single tone. But really, there was a kind of more playful, uh, sort of, uh, layout or organization of the balconies. That you see here, um, and I've circled them in red on the, um, approved drawings. And now on the proposed drawings before you for the board to decide on, uh, they are in a single line. Um, my understanding, uh, after being at the building, speaking with owners. Is that the original sort of, um, varied location of those balconies. Um, did not correspond to living areas, and ownership felt strongly, and one can understand why. That the balconies, they wanted the balconies always off living areas, and so they straightened them, so to speak. They now stack. So that they are stacked over, um, uh, and always located off of a living room. Um, previously, they were accessed from some bedrooms and other spaces, which, uh, ownership thought was, um, some, um, in inconsistent. Because of that, some of the windows that were originally shown, uh, in this row are now doors. Uh, but the the primary change here, and this was one that I spoke with Mr. Ward about early on. Um, are these balconies, uh, being in straight lines, and I I will remind the board that this is internal to the street, so this is visible from the street. But it's not on the street, and you really have to be kind of looking at these things. I don't think personally that this, um, necessarily negatively impacts. Um, uh, the the views of the building, uh, and and it certainly is logical that, uh, these these kind of outdoor patio spaces, balconies are accessed. From, um. Uh, living rooms. Moving forward, um, uh, at the base, uh, these are, uh, primarily just a change in, uh, windows. Where there were originally a row of a a line of more vertically spaced windows. Uh, these have been changed, uh, to, uh, decrease the total number of windows, but, uh, and also have just, um, pairs of windows. Um, uh, this is, uh, an off-white stucco that's been installed, and that is, uh, also per plan. Um, uh, what we call main facade five. Again, we have the banding, uh, same thing with the balcony. So these are the opposite. The opposing side, so we have balconies on one side and then facing on the other side, so you can see that in this sort of little, um, uh, perspective view we have here. Same same logic, uh, ba- balconies were originally varied. Um, you see here that they are now, um, uh, constructed in a line. They're constructed well, they're waterproofed, uh, and they are all accessed from living areas. Um, uh, seems logical, uh, seems logical, uh, but I can understand why the board would be upset that it's, um, it wasn't, um, what was originally planned. Uh, and that's why I think we're we're, um, we're back before you now. Um, moving along, this is, uh, we're getting, um, to the end of the presentation. This is the rear of Fairmont, so this is really the back of the building. Proper, and again, we have the same condition with those balconies being varied. Again, this is not a street view. You could still see this from certain vantage. But this is not right on a street. This is tucked in the back of the building, and these areas that I'm circling here actually project back further. They're more proud. So this is actually set in, but same idea, um, the balconies were, and they're glass balconies. They're all glass balconies constructed as glass balconies. Um, were originally shown as varied. Now they are shown in, um, two lines. Um, stucco banding, um, consistent with what I've been saying. We have a two-tone that's gone to a single sto- tone. And those, uh, balconies originally shown staggered, uh, are now in a single line, um, and always located off of a living room. They were previously accessed from some bedrooms and other spaces, which was were inconsistent, and because of that change, some of the windows. Have been changed to doors. If there's a balcony moved there and some doors that served balconies are moved to windows. I do want to tell the board that at this point. Um, uh, uh, the idea here is that sixteen balconies were originally proposed, and at the time of presentation, twelve are currently. Completed. Uh, my understanding is that the other four will be, um, added, and I think that that's something we 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 can confirm, but that's. Uh, my finding in this slide. Uh, and then finally, getting getting to the end here, you can see, uh, I wanna call attention to the base here. Uh, that you can really see the truss that I talked about before. There are some, uh, some, um, horizontal members of trusses. That were added to this building, uh, wasn't a, wasn't, uh, privy to some of the structural drawings, but understand there are some trusses here, and you can see some of that exposed. Um, in the as-built condition here, uh, which wasn't in the, um, the approved by board, and my, um, hunch on that. Is that structural design commenced after this first approval, and, uh, that's where some of these changes, um, came from. And so, um, again, uh, the the balconies, uh, that I talked about before, I'm just zooming into these now in the in the main facade. Um, you see those, and again, uh, in this, there's a total of twelve that are, uh, actually constructed. These these two need to be. Um, constructed. I think there was a total of sixteen ultimately, um, proposed. Um, and then finally, um, the Summit Avenue elevation, um, again, this is, um. Uh, primarily that kind of wood finish material, and there's these areas that I'm I'm circling. The wood-finished ceramic tile has been replaced by the high-density laminated timber. Again, from my point of view. Um, if wood was, the look of wood was being sought, it makes more sense to use a wood-based product. That's what, um, is happening here now. Um, the stucco banding on top, um, has been changed, uh, to the, um. Uh, to the single, single-tone, um, great late gray stucco, and then at the base, I'll just remind you that the the honed Jerusalem. Um, uh, stone has been replaced with a cast stone adobe finish. Um, there's some changes to the window patterning that are modest here. Um, and then there's also a stair in the mezzanine level. That, uh, I think the board members have seen. Now, this was actually in the C D set, the construction document set. But it, for some reason, was not in the planning board set, uh, to my, um, to my review, and so we're putting it in here. It's built. Um, I think it does make sense that it's a a kind of access point, um, up above that will, you know, there'll be some security, uh, in terms of how that's that's run, but. Uh, and then you see. But and then you see a kind of zoom in here. Now, the approved by the board drawing, we've just kind of taken that from the the C D set again. And kind of put it in our proposed drawing, but the original drawings that the board saw. This stair was not there. So this was a late addition that we're we're now coming to you with. And then you see some some images of of that location where that stair is under construction. And then finally, the main facade seven. This is, this is primarily the changing wood that I've talked about. So this is a high-density laminated timber, the banding that I talked about. And then to conclude, two more slides and then I think I'm done. The entry, this is the only plan that you'll see. This is mostly elevations and material changes. But I do want to advise the board that the the original entry, which is basically off of. Clifton and or kind of Clifton and Fairmont come together. Is a was shown as a ramp. And you can see that slope at fifteen sixteenths of an inch to one foot, pretty much the whole way with one brake. I don't think that that necessarily is the best for strollers, things like that, things with wheels. And so the ownership with their contracting team, I think, made a good decision here again. Was not before the board, we're before the board now to actually put in a series of steps. So you have a series of one, two, three, four risers. And then a platform, another four risers, a platform, another four risers, a platform, and then that's the entry. And so what that means is that there are a series of railings that are put in, which you can see in the kind of side elevation. And then you see some small views of that. And we're showing a section here of that of that stepped finish that you see. And then finally, the the Summit Avenue elevation, which is the last thing that we're going to show, is primarily. The 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 stucco banding that we we sort of talked about. And then the balconies that we've also already talked about. You see here, they're more staggered and they go into a straight line off of of living rooms. And so I've tried to capture everything here and make it kind of concise for the board. And hopefully, I've I've done that. And and I think that this is, I'm going to actually go back to some of the first. Drawings to conclude, the first images to conclude, which are the new photos that that we prospectively corrected today. I think that the intent of the building actually has been maintained. And you know, these are unfortunately tough circumstances that I think the ownership team is back to you with. I know I've had the opportunity to come before this board for some other projects of mine where there are changes. We know and the client has been told, moving forward, that the right thing to do. And what we're how we're going to do this moving forward on other projects is coming back to the board. If there are changes or at least reviewing some of these changes with planning staff, so that a decision can be made what to do. I do think the building is well, well-built. I think it's built per code. My understanding is that their inspections have been going well, meaning the building code is being followed. I don't get the sense they're they're cutting corners on this. I think that it's it's well-built. They want it to be a a great building and a great addition to the city. And so with that, hopefully, I've been able to clarify. Some of these, some of these inconsistencies in the board will vote affirmatively. So thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Garber.
No, it's just two questions and Mr. Garber just.
Sure, I was just gonna ask, you know, I assumed you would.
I won't, won't ask a lot. There was a change in the transformer vault in the main electric room to modify P S E N G requirements. You know that, right? Is that correct?
There was, yes. And that was on the side when I was talking about the garage. I may have failed to actually speak to that transformer vault door, but that's straight P S E N G spec. We've been before the board when when transformer vaults have had to be added to our buildings. They're sixteen feet wide, basically of of doors. They're 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 standard P S E N G spec and they have been installed, yes.
And there was an area of refuge required by the bulk of code on floors two to seven that were added. Are you aware of that? Are you are you, did you do a review of that portion of the building?
Not inside the building, so sorry. But but I if if that was something that was worked out with the building inspectors, obviously, it's a really great group of inspectors we have in town. So I trust that, I trust that if that was necessary, the client would have implemented them.
I have no other questions.
Okay, thank you, everybody. There is, counsel, there is one condition that. Commissioner Torres brought to light. Eddie, do you want to jump in with that?
Yeah.
Do your thunder on this.
Go ahead, Mr. Tor, Commissioner, yes.
Yes, no, Commissioner, Chairman, I'd like to thank you. Was going to be said, I was. I understand the balconies that you show on the slide two and the balconies you show. On slide five, the ones that you put in line. Those balconies that they they put in line. My main concern was as we were there, going to walk through. Was the grass of the balcony that that. That they put up has a almost a four to five inch gap underneath.
Right.
I understand. It's good for the rain, water runoff or whatever it is. If we didn't notice any, I didn't notice any drainage parts in those balconies. But my concern was underneath is a walking area. A area where people could sit around and lounge. Now, if you go to picture five, you're going to see the line of balconies. And a guy coming out of the garage area. Walking.
Yeah, I can, I'm gonna just reshare my screen.
Okay, but if we looked at that picture again, you will see that if something fell out of that spot. It is going to land on top of that post.
Yeah.
So so bait like right there, picture five, you come down to the. All the way to the right-hand side, those balconies right there, there's a walking area.
Yeah.
Underneath. At one point, we counsel, we noticed a piece of metal. Hanging about twelve inches off of that section, about three-quarter inches wide. My condition would be that something. Be there to protect that from happiness, somebody kicking something, a dog, a pet, pushes something off, you know. As minor as it may be when it comes down.
Yep.
Six or eight stories can be a issue that. To the developer, you we don't want to go there. We don't want to see somebody.
We'll make sure, we'll make sure that's taking care of Commissioner and either with a toe kick or a curb. And what I'll do is I I will make sure that the design team shares a sketch with planning staff. Make sure it meets their approval. That will be, will be, we'll take care of it.
I understand it might have to be some porous because you need something to get the water. Don't want to make a puddle of that up there, right? I understand that.
Yeah, there'll be, there might be some scuffles or something in that. We'll we'll check that and make sure the drainage is is net. But it's 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 a very solvable problem. So I appreciate you bringing that up.
Okay. And so, thank you. Chairman, I'd like to remind you of that.
No worries, no worries. Thank you. And I I do think there were floor drains in those balconies if if my memory serves me.
I don't think so.
No.
I thought.
Not the small balconies, no. The only downstairs in the large area, we saw floor drains that were open. But I didn't notice anything in the small balcony.
Okay.
And and the setbacks.
We would have to swear in Mr. Kushner if he wants to. That's all right.
Yeah, right.
Counsel, do you want to call Mr. Kushner?
Actually, Mr. Kushner was sworn in on the first hearing. So his 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 oath may be useful now. It's the part of continuation of the same hearing. But no, I don't think I have any questions for Mr. Kushner. I think we've we've covered it. I do have a question from Mr. Vazini. It's two minor questions relating to landscaping that you should be aware of.
Okay, so let's bring up Mr. Vazini.
Hello, everyone.
Hi, Mark, I'll swear again, if you raise your right hand. Do you swear any testimony you give tonight? It's going to be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth.
I do.
And for the record, can you state by your name, please?
Mark Vazini, M A R K. And Vazini is V as in Victor, I, Z as in zebra, Z as in zebra, I, and I.
Thank you.
Mr. Vazini, good evening. Good evening. Qualify you at our January meeting, January twenty-fourth, I should say. Your license is current tonight, though?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you. Our qualified again.
Okay, thank you. I just have a few minor items I just want to get on record. I'm going to share my screen. Let me know when you guys can see it.
And counsel, just let us know if we need to mark this, there's been any change or.
This is the counsel, this is the site plan set that was submitted as part of the amendment. So it's.
We can see your screen.
Yeah, we can see it.
All right, so real quick, Richard briefly described, we made the adjustment to the entrance off of Summit Avenue. I just want to get on record, when this was a ramp, we did have some bollards at the base here. To prevent any vehicle from driving into the building. Now that we have a series of stepped plateaus with stairs, we don't need the bollards, so they were removed. And again, we we added the handicap ramp, so the ADA accessibility is still here. And now we just have a more a more usable area. An issue came up in the site during construction recently where this light pole located at the corner. Cannot be installed, is shown due to some conflict with this electric junction box and conduit. So per our coordination with city, this light will be moved like right down here inside this area. And then last but not least. The transformer room, which is located down at this section of the building at Clifton Place in Fairmount. It dropped the elevation to get the required head height, which required us. To kind of split the sidewalk a little where we had to add a couple of stairs to get down. So that these doors can swing open and P S E N G can bring in their transformers. So we added a curb and a little planter and we reworked and actually made the ADA ramps. Better with the grades as it heads up to, as you head up Summit Avenue, Fairmount Avenue. But in order to do this, we did have to lose one tree from the original site plan approval. So we will make the required contribution for the loss of that tree, which I believe is still $500 a tree. We just don't have the room to put it in. It would have been like right around here.
Understood, sir, thank you. And yeah, that was a concern of Commissioner Torres and I, the that handicapped ramp. But yeah, it's fine. Let's just say it's fine.
We, real quick on record, we did make some other minor adjustments to our utility connections, but that was in conjunction. With the permitting process with the J C M U A. So that has all been approved and permitted with the J C M U A.
Sure, understood. Counsel, any questions for Mr. Vazini?
I do not have any other questions.
Okay, so I'll go to the board now. Does anybody have any questions for either Mr. Garber or Mr. Vazini?
It's Commissioner Torres. I just want to clear up at at ramp going down on Fairmont. When we look at the print, if you look at the prints, fellow commissioners, does look like a set of stairs at the end. And go into the site, you see that there was room for stairs and a ramp. The two, he says long side of each other, which was a good classification. There was one more thing. No, that'll be all. I'm done. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. Anybody else, any questions?
Chairman, to you, I too took the tour and was impressed with, you know, it's a good building. And, you know, in terms of lessons learned, I believe that Mr. Polino is referring to the Monticello Triangle Project that we passed last week. So in the Monticello project that we passed last week, one of the amendments, it came before Tanya signed off on it. That it went from a triple-stacker parking to a sub-salvage one, didn't lose any parking. There were five other conditions built in, all approved. God bless. So I mean, in terms of, you know, this coming before the board, and also they contributed to the. Expansion of the Fairmont Triangle Park, which is, you know, greatly appreciated and a good gesture for the community. But for our board and its credibility, I mean, one of the conditions on last week's amendment, the first one, in fact, said. If all colors and materials are to be changed, they must come back before the planning staff or the planning board. So to your point, Chairman, you opened up brilliantly, love working with you, stated eloquently. We're not here to punish people. But at the same time, you know, if the city in its goodness is going to be open. Might there be something that could be suggested or. Given back to the city for such a. I don't know how to put it diplomatically, disregard for the original proposal.
Before we move on, Mr. Vazini, could you stop your screen share, please?
Absolutely, I didn't know if anyone had any questions, so.
No, no, I think we're good, but thank you, we appreciate it. So Commissioner. I I mean, that would certainly be. An off-site request. If the applicant was willing to. Throw something out there for us, we can't demand anything off-site. That's not within our jurisdiction. But counsel, do you have anything?
Chairman, I I appreciate, I appreciate Commissioner Lipsky's. Observation and and your your, I I have discussed this with my client and and without, you know, without being in the awkward position. And I think it's the inappropriate position of negotiating numbers because we shouldn't be doing that, you know that. But I can assure the board that there will be a contribution to the park. That that I can say. And I'm not even sure whether it's, it may be a contribution in terms of installing something. You know, there may be, I don't know. I'm really thinking aloud right now is, you know, maybe some playground equipment or something like that. But I, you know, whatever the city deems that's something that would be needed for the park. I think we would be, my client has told me, you know, straightforwardly that he would be interested in doing that.
Okay. That's always appreciated. I've, counsel, you know, I've sat on this board since 2013.
Yep.
And unless it's in writing, I don't believe it. I don't believe it till I say it, but you know. I'd be excited to see something.
So so. I just have to caution everybody, obviously, we don't want to get into a situation. You know, if the applicant wants to do something in the future, that's up to the applicant. It's out of the goodness of of his or her heart. It's not appropriate for the board to consider anything outside of the record and the. Proposed changes to the plan. It is an amendment, we can't consider the fact that it was built. The reality is, it has to be treated as if it wasn't constructed. And we cannot request, demand, ask, or even suggest anything regarding off-site. We don't want to get into a situation where there's any question of the integrity of the board or any type of quid pro quo. So my advice to the board is not to continue down this path. Let's keep it to what's been presented and whether or not those amendments satisfy the requirements under the ordinance for a site plan amendment.
Agreed, agreed.
A few things to that, counsel. And first one, about the park, they just got $200 grant. I'm not sure they need the money, but like you said, that's not my business. But going forward to all the developers and all the community members who are watching this and say. If this is a planning, if this is a planning, if this planning board approves a project. And the developer goes out and builds something different and comes back. And and nobody's looking for punishment, then that's not, and Chairman made that clear. But what I mean, so what prevents people from going out and building at, you know, at will?
So, Mr. Commissioner, we've been down this road before. And the answer is, the application may not be granted. And then the applicant would have to. Either deconstruct or remove whatever was built in violation of the approval. So it's not as if the board has to accept any of what has happened here this evening, any of what has been proposed. The board during its deliberation can determine that the criteria hasn't been satisfied and they're not going to approve the amendments. The hardship on the applicant is, well, I already built it. Well, too bad. Deconstruct it. Do whatever you need to do, you can't move forward now. I don't know about in this specific instance, but in other matters. There are times where stop work orders are put in place. By the time the applicant gets back to the board, you're talking about. Months and months of delay, not building, et cetera, et cetera. There may have been fines issued by the enforcement branch. Again, none of our business, none of our concern. But if any applicant thinks that the better approach. Is build it and ask for forgiveness. I am sure counsel will tell you on behalf of his other clients, I will tell you on behalf of my clients. Private clients that I represent. That's not the way to approach this. It catches up to you.
That never works. It never, never works. That's not a way to proceed. And, and that's, this board knows that that's the way I have come before the board with any changes. I think if. There are any, there are any developers out there that I think they're going to find this as a way of skirting around the rules, they'll find. That that's not the case. But in this case, I hope you will find it in your hearts to grant us an approval here. You're, you're, you're muted.
Chair, you're muted.
I am. Thank you, guys. Yeah, thank you, counsel. If there's nothing else, can we move on to public comment? Okay. All right, at this time, let's open it up for public comment. Anybody from the public? If you'd like to comment on this application, please raise your hand. If you are calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hand.
Mode it amen.
How's it going? I just need to swear in before you speak, okay? If you could raise your right hand. Testament you give tonight is going to be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
What I do, I don't.
And for the record, can you state and spell your name and give us your home address, please?
My name is just I'm in Skandar. Thirty-three Clark Avenue, zero seven three oh four.
Thanks. Good evening, sir. We have three minutes for you, please.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, sir.
I wanted this my cousin to hear. Did you want to just help this for me just for this knows big English good? He wanted to help this for me. All right, here is my cousin. This good English.
Hello?
Santo, do you want to?
Excuse me, sir. Can I translate for him?
Sure, that's, I just want to clear that with through our.
You guys are proven for.
Just give us one second, guys. We have to legally qualify this.
Okay.
Who is speaking? I cannot see you.
That's me right there, sir.
Sir, I need you to tell me your name.
My name is Adam Tofik.
And you would like to translate for the gentleman sitting next to you?
Yes, I do, sir.
Who is that gentleman to you?
It's my, my cousin.
Okay, and what language is he comfortable speaking?
Arabic.
And you are going to translate the Arabic to English?
Yes, sir.
And you speak both Arabic and English, I.
Yeah, my English is not bad, like, but understand a little. I can understand more than him.
Okay.
Okay.
Chairman, in light of the circumstance. I'm going to allow the gentleman to translate for his cousin. Sir, if we can just have you sworn. And. Mike, if we can get him to swear that the testimony will be an accurate verbatim translation, I'd appreciate that.
Sure. I'll just swear him in the way I swear interpreters generally that the interpretation they give is the best of their ability.
How you doing, sir?
All right, how's it going? Just before I swear you in, can you spell your name for me, please?
My name or his name?
Your name.
Adam Tofik, A D H A M. T W F I K.
All right, thanks. And if you could raise your right hand. You swear that the translation you're about to give will be to the best of your ability from Arabic to English and English to Arabic?
Yes, sir, I do.
Thank you.
Okay, go ahead, sir. We have three minutes for public comment.
So sir, this is what you have to do. He has to speak to you. And then you have to tell us exactly what it is that he said. You're not to give any. Opinion, you're not to give any. Additional verbiage or add your own thoughts. You are merely supposed to translate. What he's saying to English only. So if he says in Arabic, my name is Bob. You say, my name is Bob.
I got what you say, sir. Okay, I will.
Thank you.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
Okay, he said he received mails for us. They translate the mail, he say he got a proof for barkens. Make a bargain in his house and he want to know like how's this work?
Sir, I can't see the letter you're holding. Is it in English?
Yes, sir.
Okay, can you read the first line to me? Counsel, I think at your notice.
Ah, I'm, my reading is not good. Like, I'm gonna try like. He say, please take a nights. Then application has been. Filed by four hundred. Calarmant LLC.
Okay, sir, stop, stop. Can you hold the paper up to the camera so I can read it?
Sure.
So Santo, that's a different application tonight.
Yeah, I can't see what application.
That's. Item.
Sir, you're moving it around the lot.
I believe that's item fourteen. That's for one fifty-one Yale Avenue.
No, fifty, fifty-three through sixty-three Yale.
Um, so, I'm sorry, this is Liz. I'm the review planner for four hundred Claremount. That's number twenty-nine on the agenda.
Okay, apologize.
So sir, is the address of the property that that paper is related to four hundred Claremount?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that is not this application. That application is number twenty-nine on our agenda. We are currently on number eight. And I will tell you that the time is seven oh eight P M. That application will not be reached until about two A M. But sir, we stop at eleven P M.
I don't know. So you have to do like seven oh five?
It is seven oh five. We are on number eight. That's number twenty-nine.
So I gotta wait, right?
There's twenty-eight items between what we're talking about and that one.
And you may wait long.
So I would, I would stick around. And listen to all the other applications before we get to that.
I understand. Okay.
I, I don't think we can say for sure at this point, but I. I'm very skeptical that we even get to that tonight.
So I do have a question, sir. He asked me for that. He can go, like, he can go any address, find that, he's speak with somebody face to face. It's kind of easy for him.
Um, that is something I can't facilitate. You would have to call. Maybe the Department of Planning tomorrow. And, you know, possibly get some information on who you could speak to.
Okay.
All right, thank you, sir. We appreciate it.
Yeah, you can, you can ask for me when you call planning for Liz.
Okay.
Also call that attorney, James McCann.
James McCann.
That information should be on that letter.
You see his name, James McCann?
One second, sir.
Down the bottom, it should be, or on the second page of the letter.
Yes, sir, I see.
That's the attorney that represents the applicant.
Okay.
Okay, they could, Mr. McCann could probably set a meeting up for you if he needed. Okay, thank you, sir. All right, thank you, Matt.
I'm Mr. Dowling. I need to swear you in before you speak. All right, if you could raise your right hand. Do you swear any testimony you give tonight? It's going to be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? And for the record, can you state and spell your name and give us your home address, please?
My name is Telisa Dowling, T E L I S S A. D O W L I N G. I live at twenty-eight Canal Circle. Jersey City, New Jersey.
Thank you. Ms. Dowling, good evening. We have three minutes for you.
Yeah, I'll make it quick because I'm concerned about the park that's across the street. I was looking to, hoping to see that it was going to be a part of the plan. I want to know, is that a part of the development or not? Because I know it was a public park. And now they, they renovated it and really looks nice, but it's locks on the gate. No one can access it. So I didn't know if it's now a part of that building.
It's not. That, that will be a public park. I don't know why there's locks on the gate.
Yeah, and it's beautiful. The kids around there from the school, the little pre-k, that would be a great place for them to hang out. They can't get in there. And this is going to date. This is that day. I understand at night. I, I wouldn't have a problem with that, but.
Sure.
That's my.
I will, I'll follow up on it. I'll, I'll see.
Mission champ, chairman last.
Yeah, go ahead.
The, the park is still undestructible. When we hit the walk the other day. There was, is a chain link fence about. That's why it's locked. If they took it down since then, I'm not sure.
No, they took it down.
But I didn't see any fences. Urban defenses that was out, people from using certain sections out, but it's, it's still. It might not be clear for destruction of people to use.
Black fence around it now. That, that fence, what you're talking about is gone. So it's a.
Yeah, it's still, so that, that tells me that it's still. Being approved, the iron and outside of things that will be open soon, but it was just, it's still not finished.
Yeah, it may not have been, it may not have been dedicated to the city yet. That might be the issue, but I'll follow up. I'll definitely follow up and see what I can find out. All right, thank you, man. All right, once again, anybody from the public, if you'd like to comment, please raise your hand. If you're calling in, press star nine to raise your hands.
Do I need to be sworn in again?
No, if you could just confirm that you're still under oath.
Oh, yes, I am still under oath.
Daley, you do have to state your name.
Oh, yes, my name is Jean Daly.
Thank you.
Okay. This has obviously been a challenging, the planning board. Application because I'm not familiar with all the iterations, but I firmly believe that things must go. Before the planning board, before any changes are made, built, installed, et cetera. We've had problems time and time again, you know, Peter Mako is, is a prime example. And. I'm glad that, I'm disappointed that something was built that wasn't even, was not approved by the planning board, that I'm disappointed with. That being said, I will state that I really like the use of the laminated timber. I'm a big fan of laminated timber. I'm a big fan of mass timber construction. It's lighter than concrete, it's stronger. It's also. Renewable and it sequesters carbon. So it's a win-win situation and I'm glad at least. There is some sort of wood product being used. The one thing I was concerned about was that. I, I, I don't know if it was for the ground level, but there was a replacement of the. I think it was a slate stones to be replaced by cast stones. Now, I don't know how. How high that went up, but I do know, at least in portions of downtown, that is. You're not allowed to use that fake cast stone, nor can you use the stucco as Peter Mako did. Do you know how high it would go? And for example, what is the, the life. Expectancy of a basically fake, you know, product?
So we're, Ms. Daly, we're certainly not talking about Ephesus.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I know.
Completely different animal discussion that. This is why I'm bald. My hair out over Ephesus, but yeah, that's not the case here.
Okay.
But. I, counsel, if you want to address that?
I have no idea. Perhaps one of my experts can, Mr. Garber, please.
Uh, yes, so, so cast stone, so there was, there was a natural stone that was originally specified. And we testified to that being replaced. I, I do want to say that cast stone is, is actually in many. Is a recycled precast concrete material. So it's actually a reusable material. It's been around a while. And you know, it's, it's just another material that. Technology today allows us to, to utilize in our palette. Wasn't around. You know, a hundred years ago, but it, it really is a durable material. It's hard. And again, it, it is formed by recycled concrete in, in, in most instances.
That's terrific. I, I just want to let one last comment. I'm, I'm glad the. Commissioner brought up the idea of that space underneath, that open space. At the bottom of the balconies. I mean, that is a very, very hazardous situation. I mean, I, I just reminds me of the construction worker downtown. Killed when someone accidentally knocked over a tape measure and it killed the man.
We actually discussed that, that day.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, yeah.
That same day, we let him know what happened.
Okay, well, well, thank you very much. I'm good.
Okay, thank you. We appreciate it. And Mr. Garber, if I'm not mistaken, that cast stone, that's. That's cleaned first, like that's clean stone and there's no contaminants in there or anything.
Correct. I mean, one of the, one of the challenges, if we're having this discussion is you got to get the rebar out. And because sometimes there's iron based material and filament and stuff in this. The technology is getting pretty good to use it and you know, I'm a big fan of recycling stuff.
Yeah, absolutely. Agreed. Okay, anybody else from the public? If you'd like to comment, please raise your hand. If you are calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hand.
The public wishing to speak, I move to close.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Public is closed. Matt, do you want to wrap us up here?
The scope of this application is very clear. Steph really doesn't have any comments to add. We are here if you have questions.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
The chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P two-two dash zero eight zero. As presented to the board here tonight.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval.
And a motion to approve by Chairman Dr. Gonzalez.
So I didn't have a chance to actually go to the site. I, I feel bad that I didn't because I really wanted to go. I do appreciate my fellow colleagues who, who went there. And I so appreciate the. Testimony given by Mr. Garber as it was very detailed and for somebody who didn't go. Really clarified and cleared things up for me personally. You know, to be honest with you, I actually like this building better. I think. There's a lot of, you know, aesthetically, like lining up the balconies. I think I like that better. I love the, the, the transference to the wood based product that you guys were talking about. I think it's a safer building and I think it's aesthetically a better building, a better looking building. Having said that, you know, I do appreciate also the sort of humility that, that came from. From not only Mr. Paulino and Mr. Garber, but like the, the team to us. from not only Mr. Paulino and Mr. Garber, but like, the, the team, uh, to us. Uh, because you, you guys know how we feel about things being changed, uh, on the field. When I make a motion, I make, I, I, I move to approve as presented to the board here tonight. I, I usually always say that when I make a motion, and I say that with intent, because we are approving what was presented to us at that time. Uh, you know, at seven o'clock at night, or ten or eleven. Uh, but we're approving it, thinking and knowing that everything that is gonna be presented to us is true. Um, so I really appreciate that kind of humility, I, I think you guys did, um, your, your best to do the best you could with what you had. Um, and, um, I, I think it's, it's a good way for the, for future developers and attorneys, and anyone who wants to, to come in front of us to really understand that this board takes this very seriously. However, having said that, again, I, I really thank, uh, Mr. Garber's testimony, that really did it for me, because I could see the difference, and I may think it's a better building, so I'm gonna vote aye.
Commissioner Torres.
I think we should, I don't know if there was that condition of balcony for some kind of pick plate, uh, to be there for safety reasons, and I bring that up for developer, you know, you don't wanna make it hurt, that's, that's what we are here for, um. I do wanna, I appreciate, once again, for the record, um, Chairman Laster suggested that we take a view of this, uh, this, uh, project, and, um, I was glad I was able to fit that in my schedule, um. One comment I have for all developers, and all the attorneys that represent these developers. When you come to us, remind that this is our first time building in this area. This is our first time, we didn't know, and that was the first time, uh, maybe two minutes into the pe- meeting. Um, the team at the site was repeated by the contractor again. My first time working in New Jersey City, that means nothing to me. That is like an insult. You've been developing a building for years. Problem I have with changes being made to a building is that it's easy for people to make a one-family, two-family development change back to the way they presented it, than it is for us to make a large development change. And that's, that to me is very unacceptable. Easy to punish the small person that might be able to use that line, because they might never build another house again. That might be their first one. And, um, it's, that's a bad example. The rules that apply for the person that builds the first time a family home, and comes to this board because of some changes, on that post, a multiple high-rise should be the same rules, I think. I am comfortable with some of the stuff that was presented. Um, there was an upgrade I saw on a lot of things, so it wasn't like Mr. Paulino said, um, cut corners. Um, they, they did upgrade to some better materials, this, this, second chances. With that, I'm gonna vote a very reluctant, yes, this project. But once again, I said, we're gonna punish a small person for building a two-family home, I call by the rules. We, this city needs to have figured out how to punish a large developer. And please don't come to, to, to me with the line that this is my first time, we know the rules. We know the engineer, we know the architects, we know the rules. I wanna say that for the record, thank you.
Commissioner Gangland.
So I wanna, uh, um, I appreciate our chair making the suggestion of, um, visiting the site for clarification purposes, um, since the project was presented to us, uh, the, um, prior meeting, and I would thank all the commissioners who were able to make it, unfortunately, I was not able to make that, uh, visit on the site. Um, having said that, and looking at the project now, and the materials being used to, um, configure it, it's a great project, material-wise, it is very, um, good. But, um, what I would say going forward with this developer, I hope, um, this doesn't happen again. Um, as you can see, this board does not tolerate these, uh, behavior very easily. So I'm hoping that this should have never, um, happened back in the future. I vote aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
I'm mute, Dave.
Mr. Cruz, we can't hear you.
I vote aye. Sick a little bit.
Commissioner Lipsky.
Yeah, so I had an opportunity to, um, visit the site, and, uh, I thought very highly of it. Uh, I, I appreciated that most if not all the units are two, are three-bedroom, which, uh, allows, uh, for greater, uh, ability for families to stay in town. Uh, I thought it was well-constructed, when I got down to, uh, the lower levels, there were two entrances for cars to come in, there was ample space for them, there was ample space. Well, very good ample space for bicycles, which I thought was very impressive. A, uh, a gymnasium, uh, a full, you know, urban, uh, building. Uh, Council Lamy explained it, uh, well enough for me to understand that, uh, if somebody, uh, does not build within approved, uh, rendition, then, uh, application that, um, they convey for us, and we determine whether or not it's substandard, or, uh, or it meets our approval. And my observations are that it's a good building, when I drove, where I was driving up to it from the west to the east, it certainly stood out as a remarkable building, so, um, I think it's, uh, well-designed, I think it's well-built, and I, and I think it'll suit the community well. The only other thing I'll say is, and, and not to horse trade, or, but, uh, or, but to humbly suggest, as I did at the site, uh, the parks, the, the city council just purchased two parcels adjacent to the park for two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars last February. Uh, the, the received two-hundred-thousand dollars, the, the bark is, is making its way, and that's nice. Uh, I don't know it needs more, uh, sliding ponds or seesaws. Uh, in the applicant's other building, uh, the one we approved at the last meeting, there were eight units for affordables. I would humbly suggest, if, and I suggested this on-site, not eight units, but if some units could be made, uh, for workforce or other, I think that would be a much better, uh, use for our city and for the families who live here. So having said that, I wish you well, and I vote in the affirmative.
Hello? I'm sorry, my computer, my computer went bad, I'm sorry, my internet looks unstable, I might have to move to the box, but, did I miss your vote, Commissioner?
If you did, I'll reaffirm it, aye.
All right, Chairman Laster.
Okay, so, uh, let me get this out of the way, um. You know, thi- this makes my blood boil when, uh, an applicant comes in afterwards, asking for approvals after they build something. Um, you know, I think we bend over backwards to make sure that that doesn't enter into our decision. Um, but I mean, thi- this is how many hours now we've wasted on this? And there's, you, you know, counsel, you'll agree with me on this, I'm sure that there is a massive backlog here i- in city planning, getting applicants to our board. A- and this is a complete waste of our time, this is a waste of my time, this is a waste of the board's time, this is a waste of the planning department's time. We heard this first back in August. Uh, this could have been taken care of in August. But, you know, I, I feel like nothing was, was presented to us in, in a clear manner. And I, I can't believe that we had to actually do a site visit to see these changes, um. Thankfully, we went and did the site visit, because it, it, you know, there was a clarity there that, that didn't come through on the print. Um, there were so many changes that y- you just couldn't, you didn't know where to start when you looked at the prints. Um, so, going there in person, seeing it in person, um, totally set my mind at ease, I, I think the changes, you know, if they were presented before they were made, not a problem, completely de minimis. Um, so that's the mindset I have to take here. As I said in the beginning, we don't punish applicants, that's not a legal use of this board, that's the building department. So, considering that these changes were never made, and that we're voting on these just as a site plan amendment, I have no problem with the changes. So, a lot of time could have been saved. Uh, you know, this board's time is valuable, a- and as I said, this is a complete waste of our time. Um, the only other thing I do have to say, seeing the, the site in person, I, I can't stress this enough to developers, I know, you know, we can't require it, it's hard to get this done, but, you know, everybody's talking about, you know, the quality of the project and, and how beautiful it is. Uh, there's things I saw that I'm not happy with the, the workmanship, um. It, it's glaring that this wasn't built union by skilled craft workers, and i- it's infuriating to me when I go into a building and, and I can't stop looking at things that don't line up as I'm walking down a hallway. So, that's why I hesitate to do site visits, because it, it just, I have trouble focusing on the actual changes, rather than the things that I find wrong with the workmanship. So, um, you know, that's just an aside. Um, the changes I found to be de minimis, I think they're all well within reason. Um, so, you know, I'm gonna vote aye, but again, huge waste of our time, huge waste.
Motion carries on in favor with Commissioner Desai and Commissioner Green not voting.
All right, thank you, Matt. Uh, Mike, I think this would be a perfect time for a break.
Well, Chairman, before, before, before you break, let me just, if I haven't already explained.
Jean, please, i- is.
Okay.
Go ahead, I, I, I think we've said enough on this application tonight. And, and forever, I don't ever wanna see this on my agenda again.
Neither do I.
All right, thank you, guys. All right, let's, uh, take ten, it's seven thirty-four, we'll be back at seven forty-four, everybody.
Um.
All right, could we come to order again, everybody? All right, let's move on to. Believe it or not, our third item of the night. Um, this is. Uh, item nine is case P two-two dash one-three-four is a conditional use for fifteen twenty-one Kennedy Boulevard. Uh, this had testimony taken on the February seventh meeting and uh. Let's pick it up from where we left off.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman Frank Cittolo on. On behalf of applicant, as you you correctly stated, we did have testimony. We actually wrapped up our case. Uh, during that hearing, um, there was a question raised. Uh, regarding the six hundred foot. Um, rule, uh, Mr. Ward. Uh, subsequent to our meeting, did circulate a memo. That I believe everyone received. And um, we are here, I guess, to hear. Deliberation by the the board on that, or I guess.
Um. So we we did close it out, or we did carry the items during public comment. Um, at which point we did find out there was uh, an opposition attorney here. That uh, wanted to put his his. Appearance on record during public comment, so um.
That that's correct, Chairman, and uh, Brian Aloya speaking.
Good evening.
Aloya. Good evening. It's good to see you. I'm here again representing the Cannabis Place four twenty corporation. I did, as I believe requested last time by the board, I wrote a letter indicating that I would like the opportunity to ask. Uh, Mr. Ward a few questions. I have about twelve questions for him. And then would like to have about seven to ten questions for Mr. Orduna to come testify, and he would be a representative of the Cannabis Place Corporation.
Sure. And uh, Santo, is there anything you want to? Address before we move on? I know we uh, we do have. Matt Ward's timeline for the application in front of us tonight, uh, that was shared. That's what the board asked for at the last meeting. That was the reason we carried the uh, application.
Well, thank you, Chairman. First of all, for the record, uh. I obviously was not in attendance at the last hearing. But because of uh, both Mike and. Uh. His mom, I have the transcript that was able to get up to speed as to exactly what had happened. Uh. So Chairman, I've looked at the timeline. I understand the issue. Jurisdiction's already been determined by the board. The application has already been. Presented to the board as its case in chief. I understand, uh. Counsel Iola's position, however, uh. Quite frankly, that ship has sailed, as they say. We've already established jurisdiction, so. Uh, I believe. What? Mr. Ward was doing was substantiating the timeline. That he had testified to and following the protocol of the board and the rules established with when. A pin gets put on the map. It's clear. To me, from reading the transcript, that there is a competitor. The competitor is trying to. Enforce the six hundred foot jurisdiction as well as uh, some other items. But. That's already been ruled on. That's been the. Position of this board. It's a time of application rule. So with that, uh, I think Mr. Ward just wanted to. Further articulate the exact timeline based on the records of of the planning division and planning board. So. Chairman, I think it's only fair. We should mark that as an exhibit. Mr. Ward should provide the testimony and walk us through it. Counsel will have the opportunity to question him about that timeline. But I think it's. It's an uphill battle for counsel based on the fact that it's a timeline of. The records, which are the records of this board, so. With that, Chairman, uh, I think the proper thing to do is have Matt. Uh, walk us through the timeline. Let's get it marked. I'm up to uh, exhibit number. I guess it would be B one for board one, since it is our exhibit that we're presenting. So we'll call it B one.
All right, thank you, and we'll certainly uh, allow Mr. Aloya the time to cross-examine as uh. He sees fit and make his case, um. But yeah, if we could, let's get Matt's testimony first.
All right, thank you, uh, Chairman. I'm gonna start sharing my screen. Um. I'll just continue. If you can't see it, let me know. Uh, so this is the uh, memorandum that was. Let me just zoom in. That was prepared uh, in between uh, last meeting and today's. Uh, this is an addendum to our prior memo. Uh, they're both available on the data portal and available to the public as well as the commissioners. Uh, we. Uh, just began this memo talking about some of the background on buffers and concurrent applicants. Uh, I will remind the board that on March twenty-eighth, the Jersey City Planning Board heard numerous applications for classified cannabis retailers. From the outset of that meeting, the following determination procedure was announced regarding concurrent applications with regards to buffers. A six hundred foot buffer would be established and enforced when a cannabis retailer pulls permits after first getting. All local and state approvals and resolutions. A copy of the reference transcript uh, for that March twenty-eighth meeting was also published to the data portal for this item. In between these two meetings for the review, and we included this excerpt from that transcript. Uh, reinforcing and stating what I just uh, stated, the bold text up above. If you'd like me to read it, I I can. Um, but for the sake of time, I will scroll closer to the bottom where we've uh, actually were um. Uh, the sake of emphasis, we've we've bolded and underlined some of this text. So uh, on this page two, we say the way that we are handling concurrent applications with regards to the separation distances. They're not recognized until they they actually exist. And the way to do that, or the timing of how to, how to pinpoint when they've established. Uh, is if they have a planning board approval, if they have a cannabis board, uh, cannabis control board approval. Which is the Jersey City's local. Seeing board, if they have the cannabis regulatory commission approval, which is the state board. And for really one step further would be on the date that they pull permits. On any of the work that they need to do in relation to their project, that's when we would mark them on the map. We've been recognized that six hundred foot buffer. And any applicant that would come in and perhaps violate that separation distance would then have to seek jurisdiction before the zoning board of adjustments. So it's right from the get-go. On that very first meeting, we had applicants that were within six hundred feet from one another. So this is something from the very beginning that we established as being very clear. Uh, I never received at any point. Uh, during um. This applicant or the other applicants, uh. Uh, uh. Process of pulling permits, any correspondence from them asking when a pin was put in the map. And uh, I want to just lay out some other facts about the timeline for these two applications. Uh, so July eleventh, twenty twenty-two, these are just some key highlights, highlights. Both applicants were granted approval by the cannabis control board on the very same night. July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two. Kushmart Jersey LLC filed their application for a class five cannabis retailer. September ninth, twenty twenty-two, Kushmart Jersey LLC paid their application fees. December nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. Me, the review planner, confirmed hearing date scheduled for January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three. January twentieth, twenty twenty-three, building department. Also called the Office of Construction Code Official. Approved submission for permits for the cannabis place for four twenty court. At fifteen forty-two Kennedy Boulevard, case P two-two dash one forty, one thirty-four. Uh, so we also went in depth even further, and we laid out a very detailed timeline. This applicant um. For the cannabis court was one of the last applications that the planning board approved. Conditionally on them getting cannabis uh, control board approval. Um. After this date, I think uh, on, it might have been May first. Or even May twenty-eighth, I do not recall at this time. We uh. In coordinating with the cannabis control board. We're directing all future applicants to apply to the cannabis control board before applying. To. The Division of City Planning. For either a planning board case or a zoning board case. Uh. The applicant here tonight, Kushmart Jersey LLC complied with that. Uh, recommendation. And after receiving cannabis controlled border approval, filed their application timely after that. Uh, everything here in this timeline speaks to uh. The applicant acting timely and acting and establishing their time of application. Um, and in applying the rule uh, that we only uh. Will put a pin on a map and enforce buffers when an applicant has. Uh, when a cannabis retailer has full permits. This applicant was far along in the process. Time application was established and and to echo um, board council jurisdictions before this board. I I think uh. Not to belabor the the timeline, um, I'd be happy to answer questions on this.
All right, I want to do a couple of follow-up real quick. Uh, first and foremost. Uh, for everybody's edification, you could just correct me if I'm wrong, but. Back in. Twenty twenty-two. March, April of twenty twenty-two. The cannabis control board had not yet been established by the city. And at the time, uh, applications had been filed with the planning board for the conditional. Uh, approvals because. That was the only board other than the governing body. Uh, that was in existence. The cannabis control board was not in existence. Is that fair?
That is true, and and any applicant that received a favorable record or favorable approval. Was approved the condition of approval. That they must. Uh. Get an affirmative vote from the cannabis control board and 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 get a license approved through that board.
And then after the cannabis control board was actually established and impaneled. The procedure was changed that the applications went first to the cannabis control board. And uh, that was something that was the policy of the city. It made perfect sense. Because naturally, if you can't get approval out of the cannabis control board. There's no point in moving forward before the planning board. And obviously, the planning board does more than just the cannabis. The cannabis control board is the board solely. Established for the purposes of cannabis, so it didn't make any sense to come to the planning board. And then go to the cannabis control board. It was determined that the proper procedure was go to the cannabis control board first. And if you get past the cannabis control board. Then you can come to the planning board uh, and get on our agenda. Is that fair?
That is fair and correct.
And then, of course. The thing that uh. We had to deal with was fairness and equity, and I believe you testified to it, and I believe it's clear. But we had applications on the same agenda. Application maybe number ten, followed by application eleven. They were within the six hundred foot buffer, and the equitable thing to do and decide was, well. We need a control in place as to when an establishment actually exists. And it's been the policy and procedure of this board that that date is when permits have been issued. By the Office of the Construction Code Official. That is the date that delineates when a establishment actually exists for purposes of enforcing the buffer. And according to your timeline in this manner, based on all the records. The earliest that could have been to state that the cannabis place for twenty court. At fifteen forty-two Kennedy Boulevard. Could not have. Been in existence prior to that January twentieth, twenty twenty-three date.
Fair. Correct. That's correct, and and. We were not holding up the cannabis place for twenty court. We received um. Their uh. Signature plans on December eighth. We returned them to them on December twelfth for them to begin to pull permits, and they filed to pull permits the very next day. Um, so I'd say that we we act very timely on their behalf as well. And uh, we we respect uh, both applicants and um, their diligence.
So Chairman, I would say that the intent of the application. And the time of application rule, which is a recognized rule in the. Land use law, it is recognized as to how to determine, for instance, when ordinance changes, et cetera. Time of application, when you file your application controls. And serves to protect. the applicants, that's why that rule was adopted with respect to these matters. And that is why we use the time of the filing of the application as when, in this particular case, Kushmark Jersey LLC had filed their application in determining the jurisdiction of this body. When that application was filed, it's clear from the city records, from the planning board records and well before when the permits were approved by the Office of the Construction Code Official. Quite frankly, Chairman, it's the only equitable way to handle these particular types of matters. Uh and that's why it's being handled in that way. I am confident that our procedure and rules are sound and that the jurisdiction is before the board to hear the Kushmark Jersey LLC application.
All right. Thank you, Santo. Um yeah, that's that was my opinion last meeting. I appreciate Matt's uh work on getting a timeline out to us as quick as as quickly as possible. Um so again, I think this just reinforces that this application is legal in front of us tonight. And um before we get to uh Mr. Lawyer, um I'll give Mr. Vitolo a first shot at Matt Ward.
Chairman, could we ask a question based on Matt's uh presentation and counsel's follow up? Okay, so in that memo that we received dated February eighth of this year, it says, let me see if I could just it's one line, I guess. It's the on the second page, the uh first paragraph there. And the way that we do that or the timing of how to how to pinpoint when they're established is if they have a planning board approval. Right? So it says planning board approval, not submission of application. And then all the other things. But the other thing that's not in here, and at least in this paragraph, but maybe uh was back then, but is now in place is uh city council approval. So now that I mean, I I I don't I'm not sure. I mean, I I hear that this application should go forward, fair enough. But in terms of pinning it on the map, it seems as if the other applicant, the concurrent applicant has all four items checkmarked in the boxes, whereas this one has three out of the four and is seeking the fourth tonight. Am I correct in that?
Well, Commissioner, I would say to you that one, that paragraph that you just referenced on page two of the memo has four equal parts as to what constitutes pinning the map.
Right.
If the applicant here this evening, the Kushmark Jersey LLC application does not have permits, I would agree with you that until they have permits, their location does not get pinned on the map. So in the event somebody is three hundred feet from Kushmark Jersey LLC, but is greater than the six hundred feet from the cannabis place, the Kushmark Jersey LLC establishment does not exist on the map until Kushmark perfects their place of business by pulling permits for their location. When that happens, then Kushmark gets a pin on the map and their location actually exists.
Right. So the language that filed, it said really one step further further would be on the date that they they pull permits. So it's further, it's that saying concurrent or before, or it doesn't say that it trumps the other three conditions. I'm sorry, two in this memo, which is
It is the fourth condition in what we've been doing since the beginning. So the language that's in the memo is going back to March of twenty twenty two. And since then, that has been the rule.
Okay.
All right, anybody else for Matt before uh we turn it open to Mr. Vitolo? Okay, Mr. Vitolo, do you have any questions for Matt?
Uh we do not. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Mr. uh Aloha. Let's uh let's open up your testimony, anything uh anybody you want to recall?
Uh just a couple of questions for Mr. Ward and then I'd like to produce um Mr. Orduna.
Sure.
Uh Mr. Ward, when you talk in your memos about concurrent applications, you're talking about the time of the application rule, is that correct?
I'm talking about the time of application rule.
Yes.
Yes.
And can you just briefly describe for the record your understanding of the time of the application rule?
Yeah, the time of application is that they have to have uh substantial application that meets uh the checklist that is adopted by ordinance.
Yes. Now, in this particular application, material was submitted at different times. For instance, the application fee wasn't submitted or paid until September ninth, two thousand and twenty two. If we look at attachment uh two D, the water bill shows that it was paid on September sixteenth, two thousand and twenty two. Attachment two E to the agenda packet says uh they paid the water and sewer redemption dated uh September twenty sixth, two thousand and twenty two. We have revised architect plans filed on December sixth. Civil engineer plans, attachment five filed on December fifth, two thousand and twenty two. Attachment six, the sidewalk and trees uh has an issue date, the further site plan of October twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty two. When did you find that the Kushmark application on what date was it substantially complete?
I do not have that in the timeline.
Well, I understand you don't have that timeline. That's not my question. My question.
Counsel, you went mute.
Your microphone is muted, sir.
You're back. Counsel, you went mute. Can you repeat?
I'm sorry, am I? I'm on mute?
You were. Now you're off.
I apologize.
You were. Yeah, we didn't get a question from you.
Oh, I'm sorry. So I was asking, uh, Mr. Ward, do you, I understand that you didn't represent in your timeline when the application was deemed complete. But to apply the time of the application rule, that's the um that that's the decision, that's the deciding factor of when that rule is applied. And I'd like to know the date on which you determined the application was substantially complete.
It is standard practice in our office to consider uh a substantial, a substantial application to establish time of application is when the fees are paid. And my timeline that that would be.
So that'd be September ninth?
September ninth, you are correct.
Okay, now, so they would be deemed substantial, even though on September sixteenth, um they had paid the water bill, so it was before they paid the water bill, or did they have to pay that also?
We are very diligent in our reviews, but that is standard practice, as I just mentioned.
So, so I'm sorry.
Schedule the application until they until they they meet the checklist items.
Okay, so if on September ninth in this particular application, I understand generally how you work and I certainly appreciate that. And I'm not trying to be argumentative, but in this particular application, just because it was done, I'll call it piecemeal, my my words, not yours. Um you know, they they handed the things after thing, which is not uncommon. And eventually your office finds during the review, okay, you've substantially met it. Um you know, the application checklist, um when you're saying they have to do the entire list. Um so if I took the the list of documents that they have to um submit with regard to this, and then I went down all the attachments in the record in this case, is that how I would determine the date on which you found substantial compliance with the application? Or do you know the date in which you found it? Or is there a record somewhere that says, you know, oh, on December eighth is is when they, you know, submitted the last?
On a record, I do not sus- I do not uh provide applicants with a letter saying they are substantially complete.
Okay. So the the dates that we have before us, we'd have to determine when it was substantially complete. Is that your testimony? Or did you actually pick a date, like the date of the application fee, notwithstanding the other things outstanding?
That is standard practice.
Okay, when you say that's standard practice, it's standard practice to say the application is complete once the fee is paid? Or it's standard practice to go through the list and once all the stuff is is checked off?
Correct. In addition to that, I will I'll expand upon my testimony and say that we confirmed with the applicant that their item would be scheduled on December nineteenth because of the holidays and because of caseload on January twenty fourth on December nineteenth, twenty twenty two. So that was ahead of this uh granting of a permit. And there was many months in between them getting back revisions uh based on our comments for very minor things, some typos, some them not understanding what our standards were. Um them clarifying a specification. Uh so that would not rise to the level of something very substantial. These were some minor comments and pickups that they were doing in their application. And I do not, I do not tell them how their professionals must work or how they, but their turnaround time should be. Uh but we did schedule them for a hearing far in advance of permits being granted at the Cannabis Corp four twenty.
Understood. Now, one of the issues um in this is obviously the six hundred foot rule, correct?
In the ordinance, yes.
Yes. And before that six, that ordinance that requires the six hundred foot rule came into requirement, it came before the board um for review, is that correct?
Of course.
And the board found that it was substantially compliance, correct?
I'm calling your question.
Counsel, counsel, re- restate the question, please.
Sure, thank you. Um when that ordinance came in, did did you or the board make any comment that the time of a permit being pulled or being approved um should be made in the ordinance?
We made it when we had our first meeting on March thirty twenty eighth, twenty twenty two.
Now, just so the record's clear, because I didn't understand, actually, at that March meeting, who was, was it, was that, that was a planning board meeting, correct?
Correct.
And now there was some type of discussion or something that happened before the planning board meeting, is that what happened?
That is correct. It was a special meeting just for cannabis retailer applications.
Okay, so that was it. When you say special meeting, that was just, it was a special meeting of the planning board, but you were still doing uh just retail applications.
Correct.
And it was, it was at that meeting that the uh permit pulling uh requirement was discussed and decided, is that correct?
Correct. Because there were multiple cannabis retailer applicants and many of them were within six hundred feet from one another.
And before that particular board meeting, were there any previous discussions with regard uh that you took place in with regard to um pulling permits being a requirement?
I spoke with the Board Council.
Why? I certainly don't want to know what you speak to the Board Council about, but other than conversations with the Board Council, did you speak to anyone else about potentially making this a requirement or inside the planning, a department, were there any discussions, okay, this is what we should do?
I do not recall.
Okay. Now, with regard to the permit itself that that needs to be pulled, that's a construction permit, correct?
Correct.
Um if someone were to buy or someone were to rent a facility that didn't need any work, uh would they never exist?
I do not know.
When you say you don't know, there's no, no decision has been made on how to deal with somebody who actually doesn't have to pull a permit to open up?
Correct. That that particular question has not come up yet.
Now, I believe it's already part of the record that my clients um were approved by the planning board on May twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty two, and I think that's on your timeline, right?
Correct.
And so based upon his approval, if he were to appear before the planning board tonight to change his plans or to do something, he'd be considered a conforming use, correct?
Pre-existing non-conforming use.
I'm sorry, pre-existing conforming use, correct?
Hold on, Matt, counsel.
Yeah, so I mean, it's the, yeah, actually, let me pause there for a moment. So yes, he's a pre-existing conforming use because Kushmark doesn't exist yet.
Yes. So if the board approves this application and then Kushmark, I guess, has to pull a permit, and then you would say they exist, or if we find out they don't have to pull a permit and some other procedures found out, my client would actually become a non-conforming pre-existing use, is that correct?
Yes, if your two doors are within, I mean, it it would be only if you're trying to expand.
Yes, so this application, if approved, would actually have a negative effect on my clients or potential negative effect on my client's ability to expand or to change plans, is that correct, if approved?
Counsel.
It would just change the jurisdiction.
Matt, I'm objecting to the question. Counsel had asked for a legal conclusion.
Bear with me one second. I think I'm actually done. I think I got everything that I needed. I certainly appreciate your time, Mr. Ward. I'd like to, uh, if the board so allows, I'd like to have Mr. um Orjuna testify.
Chairman, we do have to go plaintiff's counsel or applicant's counsel.
Agreed. I was just gonna do that. Uh, Mr. Vidal, do you have anything you want to question Mr. Ward on at this point?
Yeah, just one question. Mr. Ward has, have any of the issues raised by Mr. Aloya this evening changed your opinion or the opinion set forth in the memorandum that you distributed this evening? No. Thank you. That's the only question I have.
Okay, thank you, sir. Uh, Mr. Aloya, go ahead. The floor is yours.
Thank you. Um, did you want to swear Mr. Orduna in? I don't believe he was sworn in.
I'm not sure if he was. I don't recall, but uh we will swear him in, being that this is a separate night.
Is he with you? I don't see him.
He's not with me. He should be uh in the room.
Promoting Mr. Aduna.
Masber, you can just uh unmute. How you doing? You can hear us all right?
Yes, I can hear you fine.
All right, great. I just want to swear you in if you could raise your right hand. Do you swear any testimony you give tonight's going to be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
For the record, can you state and spell your name, please?
Sure thing. My name is Osbert Orduna, spelling my first name O S B R T, last name is O R D, as in David U N A. Can you hear me all right?
Yep.
Chairman, go ahead, Mr. Lawyer, please.
Thank you. Mr. Orduna, can you just briefly describe uh your position uh with the cannabis place for twenty corp?
Sure thing. Uh, so I am the founder uh and chief chief executive officer of the cannabis place. We're a certified minority business enterprise and a service disabled veteran owned business as well.
And I believe some of this is already in the timeline before the um board, let's go over briefly. Did you receive planning board hearing on May twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty two?
I did, yes.
And during that hearing, were you approved by the planning board?
Yes, we were after uh the completion of the hearing, we were.
And then with regard to the Cannabis Control Board, did you appear before them on July eleventh, two thousand and twenty two?
Yes, the Jersey City Cannabis Control Board, that is correct.
And you were approved by them on that date, is that correct?
That is correct.
And on September eighth, two thousand and twenty two, did you receive approval from the uh city council for?
Yes, we went before the uh city council and we were uh issued a uh received the city council resolution of approval and we were also pinned on the map.
And when you say pinned on the map, can you tell me what that means? What's your understanding of that?
What my understanding per the ordinance uh twenty one dash zero five three, uh the process that that is in black and white for the public to see indicates that yeah, once you complete that process uh and you receive your municipal uh approval from the city council, they then notify the state. Uh, the city council uh issues their resolution and then it's the planning department that actually puts the pin on the map. So if you were to go to the Jersey City Planning Board map uh for cannabis businesses. uh for cannabis businesses, you will see that there is a circle with a pin in the middle of it. That is the quote-unquote pinning of the location. What that pin means is that your business has gone through all of the identified steps in the local municipal process, which includes coming to the planning board, being uh presenting a complete application to the planning board, your GDA application with all supporting documents, so that then it can be reviewed by a planner, you can be scheduled for an actual planning board hearing. At that time, then the public, because you provide public notice, uh the public also has an opportunity to comment uh and voice their uh their opinion on your application. Subsequent to that, uh then you go to the uh Cannabis Control Board where the public also uh has an opportunity to question you, the commissioners question you as well, and then they do a uh a vote. Uh, and they decide whether to, you know, pass you or not. We uh passed unanimously. Uh, and then our final step in the process was to go before the city council uh where, again, your application is reviewed by the city council, the uh recommendations and the applicant and the approvals from the planning board, uh the zoning officer and the um uh Cannabis Control Board are reviewed, and then the city council individually, the members vote and decide whether you get municipal approval. And so we completed all of those steps uh as the ordinance prescribed. Uh, and I like to mention, the ordinance has no mention at all of anything to do with the quote-unquote pulling of permits. Uh, I know that, if I may, I know that Mr. Ward mentioned a minute ago when you were speaking to him uh about um, you know, that uh that was something that was held uh and discussed at a meeting, uh but according to the Zoom for the uh March twenty-second, twenty twenty-two meeting uh that was held, where, Mr. Chairman, you were not uh present at that meeting. Uh, but at that meeting, there was a minor, about two and two minutes and forty-five second conversation that took place uh with uh vice chair and uh and uh other members. I believe it was Mr. Lipsky, Commissioner Lipsky, that raised a question on that day as well uh where Mr. Ward uh made it clear that at the time, there were no other applicants. There was just the two that were on the agenda that day, and they were basically the first two. Uh, and the subsequent meeting, there were a bunch of cannabis businesses uh applicants that were on the agenda. But at this particular meeting on the twenty-second, there were only two uh applicants and the reference was made to a meeting that had occurred behind closed doors, not during the actual uh meeting of March twenty-second, like Mr. Matt uh Ward just described, but the actual meeting had taken place prior to that, behind closed doors um outside of the public purview, between the planning director, Mr. Ward, an assistant planner, and I believe it was counsel, Mr. Alampi as well, uh was a part of that hearing, but that 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 uh conversation where that decision was made uh by these four individuals as to the pulling of permits, being the actual arbitrator of of the final step in the process. Yeah, that didn't happen before the public, so I'd just like to correct that for the record. And if anyone wants to go to the planning board Zoom link, it's the meeting of uh March twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-two. It's about the one uh four point forty-three uh minute mark, I should say, one hour forty-three minute mark, and it lasts about two minutes and forty-five seconds. That overview that Mr. Ward gave with regard to the meeting that had occurred in private, behind closed doors, and not before the public regarding the pulling of permits.
And so to be clear, was your understanding that on September eighth, when you received the municipal approval, that's when it was pinned? Is that correct?
That is.
I'm gonna object to the question. Can we get a foundation from this witness? Does this witness have any expertise in the interpretation of the ordinance? Or is he just going to continue to opine based on him being a competitor to this business?
Uh, sure, I have no problem answering that, Mr. Alampi. Uh, I am first and foremost.
The question was posed to counsel. Counsel is gonna have to have you lay the foundation, so.
Sure, my apologies.
Sure. Well, foremost, I I I respectfully disagree with the objection. He's talking about his experience and what has happened in this case, and his reviewing the the public records in this matter, but with regard to his ability to to read, if you can tell me your educational background.
Counsel, we're not gonna do this where this gentleman tells me that he can read, okay? He wants to talk about.
My understanding is he's just trained paralegal.
He wants to talk about his interpretation of the we're not gonna talk over each other, counsel. So this gentleman wants to give his opinion of the ordinance? Is is that what your intention is, counsel? To have him give his opinion of the ordinances?
Is that what my intention is? No, that's that he's he's testified.
His intention is, is that your intention?
That is not my intention. I'm actually almost complete. I have about four more questions.
Okay, so let's move on to the next question, please.
Right. I I was I joined in the objection.
I don't even understand the objection, so I'm just gonna move on. Now, there's been lots of uh testimony indicating with regard to the pulling of permits. Mr. Orduna, can you tell me your experience and when you first applied for a permit in this case?
Sure. Uh, so my experience with pulling permits, I've owned a uh government contracting company for.
I'm sorry, Mr. Orduna, not your experience as far as government contracting and things that with your experience in this particular uh matter. When did you first try to pull permits and what were you told and what happened?
Okay, sure. So our planning board minutes, if you if the public were to review those, uh had a caveat in them, and it stated that we could not pull permits until we had actually um received approval from the Cannabis Control Board, uh received approval from the um the uh city council, and ultimately until we had received licensure from the state. That that's what was on the record for us. And so we went through those steps like you, we just reviewed, we got our our final step in the municipal process. Uh, that took place uh on September eighth. Then on October twenty-eighth, we received uh licensure from the Cannabis Regulatory Commission. Uh, and then at that point, uh in the beginning of November, we went to the building department to pull permits. And it was at that moment that uh we found out that uh the fact that we had a a planning board resolution that approved the uh our application uh that wasn't enough, and that we actually needed to have uh plans that were signed off on by uh the chairman. And so the fact that we had the municipal, excuse me, that we had the resolution from the planning board or the approval from the planning board, a copy of the stamped and sealed plans, which had been presented to and documented as part of the planning board uh hearing, we found out that that wasn't sufficient. Uh, now, based on my own knowledge and experience working in fifteen different states, that.
Mr. Orduna, I'm gonna.
Contract, uh, I'm sorry, I was.
We're doing it. I've given you a lot of leeway. The question was, when did you file for permits? That was the question.
And and I was trying to set the basis.
Just tell us the date, sir.
And so it's it's.
The dates are.
If you would let me finish my sentence, I was gonna say it's complicated, because when we first tried to file, we weren't able to ultimately.
I'm gonna continue to.
We submitted our application for the permits. We submitted our application for the permits on December eighth and and then ultimately, we received our permits on January nineteenth.
So the first time.
December eighth is the answer, sir. Thank you. Counsel, next question, please.
Thanks. So the first time you tried to uphold permits in November, can you tell us what that date was?
Uh, that was uh right before the uh Thanksgiving holiday. I believe it was the week before. Uh, we went in and uh, like I said, as I just described, went through the the process of presenting a copy of the planning board resolution uh and a copy of the stamped and sealed architect plans. That's when we found out that uh we needed to have uh a copy of the plans that were actually signed by the uh chairperson. That point, we reached out to our planner. He wasn't in. It was the holidays. Long story short, uh it while there being December, when we can actually, when we were actually able to get in contact with our assigned planner uh and then uh find out the process for dropping off a set of plans that the uh chairman could then sign off on, but that took a matter of basically several weeks to get that done. Um, and when we received the plans on December thirteenth, we immediately proceeded over to the building department to then file for our permits on December thirteenth of two thousand and twenty-two. Uh, and review process takes about a a month, so uh we received our actual permit uh on January nineteenth.
If at any time during the procedure that you just described that you went to um to get all of your approvals, were you ever told that the pulling of permits triggered anything?
No, no, and and not only did it not trigger anything, I'd like to also state for the record here that at no time during our hearing were we told of that uh that clause that was, I guess, decided prior to March twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-two in that closed-door meeting, and I've spoken to ten other applicants uh in Jersey City, and not one of them uh is aware. Some of them are even on this call tonight. Uh, not one of them is aware that the final deciding factor after you've gone to the city council and gotten municipal approval for this from the city council, not one of them was aware, as I was not aware as well, that the pulling of permits is actually the new goalpost and finish line that uh that you have to cross. Uh, and to me, that's, you know, just very, very curious, to say the least, because i- it's not anywhere. You go to the planning board site, you don't see it, you you go before the planning board, you're not told that, you have your hearing, you're not told that uh and nowhere else i- i- is that information found. So it's a hidden little nugget of data that I guess only some people are made aware of, but we definitely do not did not have that information, and the ten old.
So let's move on to the next question.
And the ten other applicants that we've spoke to are were not aware of that information.
Thank you. Um, I have no further questions unless you have anything else to add, Mr. Orduna.
Yes, so I I would like to add that, you know, first and foremost, I am a uh paralegal and have practiced as such for uh over two decades, so I am uh familiar with interpreting legal uh documents, including ordinances and other laws. Um, in addition to that, uh I have eleven years of uh contracting experience as a business owner, as a general contractor, working on government contracts, working on public works projects in multiple jurisdictions, including New Jersey. Um, and so I just found it very odd that you know, usually what's in black and white, the law that the and the ordinances that municipalities pass with their city council and are signed off on by their mayor. Uh, that is what I'm used to seeing as what the rules are, right? They're nice and black and white. I'm a Marine. I love black and white, because you can just follow along and do your little checklist. Unfortunately, in this situation, this whole thing of pulling of permits as being the final deciding factor in this process, um you know, that's based on a closed-door conversation that happened some point prior to March twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-two, and involved four individuals, some of whom are on this call. Um, and apparently, no one is aware of it, so it's a hidden secret. And I'd like to say that as the uh, you know, like I tried to state in the previous hearing, uh when I was cut off and not allowed to speak, we're bringing fifty union jobs, construction union jobs, cannabis uh 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 union jobs to Jersey City, and the fact that, you know, this is is somehow, you know, not even a factor in in the fact that you know, here we are, doing the right thing, building union, the building the correct way a- and and to a higher standard, and yet somehow, there's an arbitrary rule of of pulling of permits that that it's not even a rule, I should say, it's an arbitrary comment that if you go back to the March twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-two hearing, you'll see that that it's a two-minute conversation that references a conversation that took place behind closed door. The law and the municipal regulations, it they're codified, that's the law, and the law is in black and white. Just like I work, because I was stopped and frisked over a hundred times myself as a young adult, so just like the laws that were uh directed towards our black and brown community, since, you know, the mention of equity and equality was was brought up earlier in this hearing. Um, our communities, our black and brown communities, we now know were disproportionately targeted uh during the cannabis prohibition, and it's interesting how during, at that time, laws were, you know, manipulated in a way to be utilized adversely against our community. And here we are in what's supposed to be post uh prohibition and and uh opportunity that's being created for business owners. We are a Latino-owned business, a service-disabled veteran-owned business. We followed the letter of the law to the T. Yet somehow now there's a new uh uh extension uh of the goalpost being moved fifty yards. Imagine if 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 I was Mahones and they said the goalpost, no, that's not a touchdown, you gotta go another fifty yards. How's that fair? Or if I owned a a cellphone store and I was told, you know what? Uh, you you can have your cellphone store here, but we're going to place all these other businesses, uh, you know, in front of your your store as well, violating the local ordinance. You you can't do that. The ordinances are there for all parties to follow, including the planning board, including all the applicants, including uh all of the agencies involved, because the laws are were voted on by the uh city council. They voted in the affirmative, the mayor signed it, they voted in the affirmative, and to your point, counsel, um when the planning board had the opportunity to add that additional step of, okay, the last last step is actually pulling of permits, they didn't do that. And so that it's unfair to persons like myself, to the other ten people that I spoke to that are also applicants, to all of a sudden have this extra step that nobody is aware of. Now, I do realize that the counsel for the other party did references during his previous testimony, but all of the ten other people that I spoke to that are local Jersey folks that are trying to secure a a license as well, none of them were aware of it. And it's not in any of the testimony that I went through and all of the hearings that have happened since March to uh this to this previous hearing where the these planning board at any point mentions to an applicant, by the way, the final final step is actually pulling of permits. That has never been communicated to any applicant uh during a planning board hearing, and that has never uh it it's not found in anything in black and white uh from the planning department that is transmitted. It's not on the GDA checklist, it's not on anything. And the what's interesting is there's a lot of conversation here about time of application. Well, it's interesting, because there's actually a case, New Jersey Supreme Court decision from two thousand and thirteen regarding time of application. And in that, the New Jersey Supreme Court ruled that time of application only gets triggered when an application is substantially complete, i.e. in specific reference to a GDA application, when the items on the checklist are complete. Now, as Mr. Ward mentioned before, and as it's a, you know, the documents in the uh record show, uh Kushmart continued to submit applicants that are quote-unquote uh part of the GDA application, you know, things like architectural plans, so that the planning board could review them, uh payment of uh property taxes and and water fees, uh payment of liens on the property, uh paying for their planning board application, those things were not done until months after we had completed our entire municipal process. Uh, you know, you're talking about things that are part of the GDA checklist that would, in essence, in the eyes of of, I believe, what the Supreme Court's decision uh mimics and identifies substantial completion of all of these key items that are required for there to be substantial completion, but yet those items didn't take place until September, October, November, and December of two thousand and twenty-two, long after we had gone to through the entirety of the municipal process and even after we had received our CRC license. So I understand your position, Mr. Alampi, about uh, you know, this being before the board tonight, and I respect that, and I apologize if at one point I I may have gone off track, but the fact of the matter is, sir, the New Jersey Supreme Court uh decision is is very clear uh on municipal land use law and what constitutes time of application uh with regard to, in particular, applications before uh different regulatory bodies such as this very same one.
Thank you. I have nothing further, Chairman.
Okay, thank you, sir. Uh, Mr. Vitolo, give me one quick second. Uh, Mr. Orduna, I do want to get on record, I am a union member of twenty years. Uh, I am a union officer, executive board, local six-nine-six sprinkler fitters. Uh, I was a delegate to the last UA national convention, I'm sorry, international convention. Um, and I am a current delegate to the New Jersey Pipe Trades. And I think your attorney will agree with me that if I gave preference to any union-built project whatsoever, number one, it would be illegal. Number two, it would violate the oath that I took to the to uphold the state municipal land use law. So while I appreciate that it's being built union, I'm sure it's gonna be built right. I'm sure it's gonna look great when it's done. That cannot enter into my decision-making tonight or any night. And I I think if you go back over the last nine years that I've been on this board, I think I've demonstrated that. So that being said, uh, Mr. Vitolo, if you want to cross-examine, you're welcome to it.
No, thanks. I I just want to state for the record that Mr. Orduna was not qualified as an expert witness, so any testimony that he gave on the meaning of this ordinance or any legal interpretations are um are unqualified and should be disregarded by the board, but other than that, I don't have any questions for him.
Mr. Lawyer, can you uh uh swear me in so that I can uh big give my credentials so that I can be uh included as an actual expert witness with regard to my certifications in, for example, building design for Homeland Security, the fact that I worked and was a techn.
Sir.
Yes, I'm just trying to get it on get on the record, so I I'd be more than happy to go over my credentials and and demonstrate how I actually am an expert witness, but please.
Are are you licensed in the state of New Jersey to practice?
Are you licensed in the state of New Jersey to practice law, sir?
Did you hear me say that I was a lawyer? Because I never said that. I said I was a paralegal.
Are you?
Counsel, I'm going to speak to you, counsel, because I'm not going to become argumentative with the witness. The witness is not licensed to practice law in the state of New Jersey. Counsel, I'll ask you the question. Is the witness a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey?
He's not.
He is not. So, sir, you are not an expert in professional planning and you are not a licensed lawyer in the state of New Jersey. Thank you.
Okay, so Mr. Vitolo, you didn't wish to cross examine. Anything else, Mr. Lawyer?
No, thank you very much for your time, Board.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ordu. We appreciate your time in front of us tonight. And thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Thank you for your time and the opportunity to speak before you. Thank you, Mr. Alampi, as well for your time. And counsel for Kushmart, thank you for the opportunity to speak as well.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate it. Okay. Does anybody have any questions before I open up public comment? Okay, Santo, anything else from you?
Well, one thing, Chairman, I'm sorry.
Sure, go ahead.
Oh, under New Jersey, Jersey City code ordinances, and it was referenced by the witness, twenty one dash oh five three. All right, so then there's section four subsection D. And then in that, there's E. It says applicant shall provide, and I believe it was intended for the cannabis control board, but it says applicant shall provide a map of nearby cannabis establishments. Applicant shall indicate compliance with maximum number of separation distance requirements. And it says a list of cannabis establishments shall be made available by the State Commission of Jersey City or Jersey City or Division of Planning. Now, it looks, I mean, from Matt's timeline, I mean, certainly, we knew that the not the Kushmart, the other dispensary is had an application, was planning board approved. So knowing that, I mean, did does Kushmart, when it went before the cannabis control board, or did it? I think it did, right? Kushmart? Let me see if I can pull up your memo.
Yes, they went and were approved on the same night for the cannabis control board for the timeline.
Okay. And so did they know that there was another, I mean, obviously, both knew that there was going to be an application in place? Were those addresses proffered at that time?
My understanding that that is that they are specific about locations when they make applications before the cannabis control board.
Okay, so my question then is, is the counsel, Aloya, did you represent to the cannabis control board at that date that you were applying for permission at that particular at the covered place?
My recollection of the hearings that happened with regard to our application and the Kushmart application was they deferred to this board and said that is not our jurisdiction. We don't determine whether or not the six hundred foot is in violation, and that would be decided at this level, meaning your level, the the planning board.
Yeah, I didn't ask.
What he asked. I'm sorry, I misunderstood the question.
What I asked was, at the cannibal, at the cannabis control board, did you or did you at that time represent your client?
Yes.
And did you state on the record the address that you were intending and currently seeking to use for this dispensary?
Yeah, my recollection is absolutely. They knew while we were there. Yeah.
And again, without trying to get them to at that point decide anything. My same question is is to Mr. Vitolo, the same thing, when you went at that same night. Were you aware? I mean, did you, hey, did you represent Kushmart?
I did not, but I will tell you, Commissioner, I I do do these applications and I have had applications within six hundred feet that were on the same night. And of course, you identify the location because that's the first thing you say. I am here on behalf of such and such. Our location is such and such. So of course, it would have been disclosed during the the control board meetings.
Okay, so we know that that both were disclosed at that meeting. Then it's not until April, I guess, of twenty twenty two that Mr. Ordon's operation seeks planning board approval, approval. Is I mean, am I correct in that? And and I guess at that, if if it is the timeline, which I believe it is, then was there an understanding that Kushmart was also was a map representation that Kushmart was seeking a place within whatever feed it is? I guess that's to Mr.
What are you asking, Commissioner? Are you asking me? Because I do not know what was represented before the cannabis control board the night when these two applicants were approved.
So Commissioner, let's ask the question to Mr. Aloya, since Mr. Aloya seemed to indicate that the cannabis control board took the position that the six hundred foot buffer was not within their jurisdiction at the time they were hearing the license. So counsel, I guess Commissioner's question is, was this raised in front of the cannabis control board? And was it clear that both establishments were within six hundred feet of each other? In front of the cannabis control board?
I think my client would have a better recollection. However, my recollection is it was clear and my recollection is they said that it was your jurisdiction, so they were not going to address the issue. That's my recollection. But, you know, again, I don't have the transcripts or I'm going off the best of my recollection. I want to make that clear.
But counsel, I will accept that because Commissioner, what I will tell you is the six hundred foot requirement is only with respect to whether this board has jurisdiction or whether the applicant has to go in front of the zoning board. So so that everybody understands this. The ordinance says there's a six hundred foot requirement. If you fall within the six hundred feet, it does not mean that you cannot get the relief to open that establishment. You would have to get that relief from the zoning board of adjustment. And there is a certain burden of proof that you would have to establish to get that relief. But there is an avenue for a business to open within six hundred feet of another business. But that's not what we're talking about here this evening, right?
Right.
This evening was, when do we determine an establishment to exist for purposes of the six hundred foot buffer? That is the jurisdictional question. We've had to hear it. We've determined that it was time of application and that this applicant Kushmart filed their application for the conditional use before this board, before permits were pulled, which was the triggering event. Despite what the position of the objector is.
So my concern with that, counsel, is that I I'm now looking at Matt's notes and and I apologize to Mr. Duna. It's the cannabis place submitted applications to Division of Planning and Cannabis Control, April twenty seventh. That's on Matt's timeline. Then Kushmart submitted it May seventeenth. May twenty fourth, Cannabis Place gets approved by our governing body. Then a couple, few months later, July eleventh, both go before the cannabis control. And counsel just put on record that both presented what their addresses were. But when presented to Cannabis Control Board said, I think I heard counsel say correctly, we're not in position to judge that six hundred or whatever fee, I'll say six because I read the the ordinance, and go back to the planning board. But by that time, the the horse had left the stable. I mean, Cannabis Place had already the planning approval. So and then it wasn't until later, July, two weeks later, that an application was submitted for Kushmart. So and then that just goes back to Matt's memo. It seems like there's four boxes that need to be checked in order for it to trigger the pinning. It's the planning board, it's the cannabis control board, it's the municipal council, but that's not in the memo, but that's what's evolved. And lastly, the state cannabis control. And then I'll just lastly say this, is in my reading of the ordinance, there's nothing, and I'll just pull the ordinance back up, that says with regard to this, this is city code, chapter three forty five zoning, article five zero one dash oh five three, section four subsection A. And then it says that applicants shall provide maps. So in part, I mean, it it I get the sense of what Mr. Adon is saying is is you come to Arizona and whether you're Philly or Kansas City, you know, you want to think that the rules are there. And it just seems kind of convoluted on my part. And that's where I'll end.
Could I just say something for the record? And it's that, you know, please also keep in mind that during this process, the procedure switched where we were directed to go to the cannabis control board and then come to the planning board. So we would have been before the planning board months ago, months ago. And I see Mr. Ordonia laughing, but it's not very funny, actually. But we we would have been before you and you would have known of this issue in whatever, September, October. So the point being, Commissioner Lipsky, is that the reason why the city has done it this way is that it is a clean way of doing it so that everyone knows when you pull a permit, that's when you're in the map. And as they said, it, everything coming after that then is adjusted. It it just makes sense, given that there's been so many different procedures back and forth. And I, again, I have other applications. My clients have known about this since June, since pinning in the map. And and we've known about it for months. This was never raised by Mr. Ordu. He never called or I don't see any letters in the record. So the fact that he he wasn't aware of it, either he didn't ask the question or he wasn't, you know, informed on what the proper procedures were. But this has always been our understanding and we're compliant. We're here with with good jurisdiction before the board. And we just ask the board to proceed on it. Thank you.
So, Mr. Commissioner Lipsky, I would just say this. Let's direct all further questions through the chair to myself or to Mr. Ward, and we will happily guide you through all of this. If there are any other questions from yourself, Commissioner, or any of the board members, if there's anything that anybody is is struggling with, we're we're happy to guide you.
All right, so I'll direct this to you, counsel. And, you know, my high school coach told me would have, could have insured it for losers, right? So what we would have done and could have done or should have done is besides the point. That's number one. Number two, on I just stated for the record, what our municipal law states says nothing about permits, I'll end it at that. Thank you.
Chairman, may I be heard?
No. Chairman? Chairman?
I'm sorry, guys, I was within within earshot. I wasn't sitting in front of the computer right there. I'm sorry, who was that that wanted to speak?
Brian Aloya.
And okay, I'll allow, but you know, let's keep a leash on this thing, guys.
Yep, the only thing I ask Chairman is if the board would so consider having Mr. Ordu speak, he was just able to locate an email from the planning board that I understand. He was able to shoot it to me via text that shows that he was actually pinned slightly after September eighth, the emails actually dated November fifteenth, confirming his pinning.
So I would be the only one that could speak on behalf of the planning board, sir. And I did not send an email.
Well.
I'm the the planning board chair. I'm the only one that can speak on behalf of the planning board. I sent no email. I have no city email address. Yes, I conduct business during our meetings. That is it.
Oh, yeah, I I apologize. It was actually from the Department of Housing, but it's forwarding.
Way different, way different, sir.
It's forwarding the online map is what it's doing. I'm just, which is when the pinning shows online. If that has any relevance on what, you know, to or not, it's up to you, but that's when, you know, on online, the public would see a pinning and think that it was, you know, that it was done and it was official.
I I think we've more than established that this board has jurisdiction over this application tonight. And you can agree to disagree, sir.
Thank you. I appreciate your listening to me.
Thank you. Okay, anything else, Commissioner Lipsky?
No, Chairman, I appreciate the time.
Okay, no worries. Your comments. All right, anybody else before we move on to public comment?
I got a question for Matt. Just a comment on that was made on March twenty second meeting. Was anything mentioned about permits then or is that relevance to this or what? It's kind of got me confused that if, how does somebody follow something they didn't know? Do you have any comment on that, that statement, Matt? Or counsel, I should ask counsel, either better.
So, so Commissioner, this issue is a challenge due to the infancy of the projects. And what I would say is, if we did not have establishments that actually opened for business, you could have a establishment that doesn't actually exist in reality and nobody could be within six hundred feet of this phantom place. That's what the whole issue is about. This will not happen two years down the road, three years down the road, when the establishments are there. You can go to them. The problem is, if for whatever reason, either one of these establishments does not open for business but has approvals to open, they could potentially bar somebody else. And that's that's the equity that we were balancing and why we went to time of application and why permits matter. So I appreciate what everybody's articulating.
Yeah, I understand that part. I understand. I've been on the board for years. We pass something and it doesn't mean that's ever going to get built or stuff like that. I I understand. But we were the question that was, when was it mentioned to anyone on of using permits to be a pin? If it was mentioned in the March twenty second closed meeting, but never mentioned to the public or the board, how would somebody know that? And unless you have experience and ask the question, you would not know, but it's going to be pinned on the map. When did we start knowing to be pinned on a map you need a permit?
So there was no closed meeting. The meeting was the public meeting that was March twenty second. And as far as the, as far as the pinning of the map, Matt, can you speak to the map and what?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify. It's March twenty eighth, twenty twenty two. We keep saying the twenty seconds. I think we're.
But there was, it was stated.
But it's March twenty eighth, twenty twenty two. And it was stated under on oath, on the record, just like I am now. I am on under oath. And it was stated at a public hearing that was sunshine. That was sunshine and and was before was was put on YouTube. You can go and watch.
Thank you. That's that's what I was trying to, because the question, the comments that were made before left me, made it sound like it was never known, you know? And I just want, thank you for the clarification of that.
Well, let me follow up on that, Eddie. That's a that's a great point, Chairman, how directed as counsel said. So Matt makes this statement on record and he's a tremendous planner and he's been, he's super work with. Where does that authority come? Um, where does that authority come from or what, or on what grounds does that hold? Legal statute compared to the city, county, city, uh, ordinances?
Well, first of all, there's no mention of the local support resolution in chapter three forty-five. So any, any mention of that on the record tonight. Is conflating the two chapters that regulate cannabis establishments and distributors in the city. Uh, so in the absence and in the crafting of this ordinance. Uh, it was unforeseen if when a, when a concurrent applicant situation comes up. We on our second meeting where we heard. I'm sorry, we heard one applicant before that March twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two meeting. One cannabis retailer applicant before then. We scheduled several on that meeting. Several of those applicants were concurrent applicants within six hundred feet of one another. We made it very clear. And if anyone knows me, I answer my phone when it rings. I never received a phone call or an email. From. The cannabis place four forty core corporation. And they, from the timeline, should have known very well that there was a concurrent applicant. And if they wanted to raise a problem or a question, then that is the answer I would have given them. That is when you pull permits.
No, I get that. And you know what? I'm looking at the ordinance and under the cannabis, uh, five. Uh, under subsection D. Uh, subsection D, then it goes down a couple of other subsections. It says a community impact summarizing how the app can attend to have positive impact. Which is proposed to the cannabis avenue to be located, showing include economic impact and description of outreach activities. I know, I mean, uh, we've witnessed this and how people have said they've gone out and, you know, gotten community inputs, but that's not my point. My point is, is that. The, to your point, I said from the beginning to the chairman, you're wonderful to work with. You're, you're a treasure for Jersey City, no doubt about that. You do. Pick up the phone and you went above and beyond to create this timeline and I'm very thankful for it and it's very helpful. My only point is, is in going on the record, you stating that it takes permits is great, but it, it, but I'm having a trouble. Of juxtaposing that with the city code and what it says. And how the city's operating. Because, you know, to the, to the point earlier, I mean, as Santo's saying is, is that the, this process is evolving. And I don't know how it's actually going to play out and I'm looking for equity. And I, I think we all are in some sense.
So Commissioner, we're conflating so many different things. We need something to establish the establishment. It can't just be that you have. The approval of three regulatory agencies. So rather than go with something like a certificate of occupancy. We went with the pulling of permits to say, okay, this establishment actually exists.
I mean.
Again, to establish jurisdiction before this.
Right. But to me, it just seems as if I went through the hoops and did the jumps over the hurdles to get. All those different applications, whether they turn it over to somebody else or go ahead with it. It just, I mean, for somebody to go through tho- those four regulatory bodies. And then just said, oh, well, I did that, you know, as an exercise in futility or for a PhD dissertation would seem senseless. Rather than them bringing to fruition what they're, uh, stating on record they're intending to do.
But we're forgetting all of the other factors such as they don't have the financing to open the establishment and operate.
But no.
So they can't do that, right?
I'm sorry.
We're just trying to be equitable to everybody, both. Of the people appearing this evening. That's all we're trying to do. We're trying to set a procedure that makes it fair and balanced for everybody. If this was six hundred and one feet away, we wouldn't even be having the conversation. I don't know how much that makes a difference.
Well, I mean, to your point, I mean, I just stated in the, um, ordinance, it says an economic plan. But we can't, I mean, the markets change. We've seen buildings not get financed that we approve. And it does, I mean, that can't, I mean, if they, if they go through our hoops at the time. And get, and, and get approvals from the different bodies, that in itself should, you know? Be what is required. And to Matt's, uh, memo, let me just come back to that real quick.
But Commissioner, that is what's required. But to put it on the map, we require that you pull permits so that. The world is on notice that you're actually going to open and establish your business there.
Fair enough, but that, and I'm, here's where I want to end, because I think, I, I, at least in my head, I, 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 I'd see where this can go. But it says that, that paragraph on pa- on page two, it says. Uh, and the way to do that, uh, and gets concurrent, the absolute, to see if they actually exist. Or the timing of how to, or how to pinpoint that they're established is if they have a plan, if they have planning board approval. If they have cannabis control approval, which is Jersey City's local licensing board. If they have the cannabis regulatory commission approval three, there isn't say, uh, and which is the state board. Doesn't mention the city council, which got introduced at some point. And, and then it says, and for really one step further, step further, not built into the cake, one step further would be. Uh, on the date that they pull permits. So, I mean, if you, if you, if, if somebody's checked all four boxes before somebody else checks all four. Again, I don't, I don't like to use, I like running and I'm a marathoner and I go for the long distance, but. Uh, you know, I mean, if you cross the line with four check marks first. That seems to be the, uh, equitable part, but. I could be wrong.
They have, they didn't check the boxes before this applicant was deemed complete. And scheduled for a hearing.
Matt, does this applicant have planning board approval? One of the boxes. Yes or no, right? I'm sorry, Chairman, I'm asking, I should have asked that to you.
Commissioner, thi- this is all in the timeline.
And.
We, we can discuss this all night. This is all in the timeline. This is in the timeline. We asked for from Matt. We received it. I, I don't know what other clarity you need tonight.
That, all I just want to say on the record then is, does, like, that's a question I just asked back. Does this applicant have planning board approval?
The applicants here tonight for planning board approval.
Thank you.
That's without question.
So that that timeline that Matt shared with us, that statement from March twenty-second. Asked for three boxes to be checked before and going further. Not, and all four box, uh, I'm sorry.
But that's whether this applicant is on the map. There's no question that this applicant is not on the map.
The one on tonight.
Yeah, the Kushmark application is not on the map.
Okay, and you're staying, that, that's what I want to know is, because that seemed to be something Mr. Adona was making a point. Is he, is he on the map? Is he not on the map?
Mr. Or Dunya?
Cannabis dispensary is on the map?
No. They may be on the map now because they pulled permits as of January. When the Kushmark application was filed, they were not on the map. That's the whole point.
Well, for permits, but where every other.
And we're not on the map of being an establishment for purposes of enforcing. The six hundred foot buffer from their door, them being. The four twenty, the objector, I don't know their name.
Cannabis dispenser.
But there is no question that Kushmark does not have an establishment yet. They're here obviously tonight for approval from this body. That's what they're seeking.
So I guess, and to you, counsel, is just for, and through the chairman, with all due respect, is so. If I get the three regulatory and then I get the permits. And I have all four lined up and yet somebody comes in after which, who has three. Uh, and two of them came in after, um. Then if tonight we plan, if we approve this application, this puts Kushmark on that block and puts the Canterbury. Uh, cannabis dispensary out.
Kushmark will not be considered on the map until Kushmark gets permits. Until you get permits, you don't go on the quote unquote map. You're not paying. So now. The objector. Cannabis four twenty. I don't know the name, I'm sorry.
The objector, cannabis dispensary.
Cannabis dispensary. Got permits at the end of January. I believe it was January nineteenth, according to the timeline. So that is when their establishment would go on the map as being an establishment. They got the three regulatory approvals and they've pulled permits for their location.
So they're considered.
So anybody that comes after today. Has to respect the fact that four twenty exists. The cannabis dispensary, I'm, I keep butchering their name, the objector, Mr. Iola's client. However, if somebody is in within six hundred feet of Kushmark. Kushmark's not on the map, even if they get approved tonight, because they haven't pulled the permits. When they pull the permits, their establishment goes on the map. And yes, you will have two establishments within six hundred feet of each other. On the map. And in twenty twenty-five. This won't come up again because we will have establishments. They will actually exist, hopefully. We've been doing this for a year and a half. We don't have one establishment open and operating in the city to my knowledge. A year and a half.
Chairman, counsel, may I interject for just very two minutes, I swear.
I just gotta swear you in.
You're gonna have to identify yourself for the record.
Yep.
I'm sorry, Tanya. Uh, do you swear any testimony you give tonight's going to be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Stanya.
But for the record, um, there isn't a zoning ordinance that says that you have to pull permits, because that's not a zoning ordinance. Um, the two things that we speak of, time of application and pulling permits as in guaranteeing an approval. Are really having more to do with MLUL and case law, right? So I get an approval, um, and when I pull the permits, that's when my approval is guaranteed. Why is that written? Right? It's written like that because same municipality wants to change the zoning. You want to make sure that you have the approval for the zoning that you wanted, right? So that's why we also have expiration dates, right? So you've already heard tons of extensions. So you can seek an extension for one, two, three years and guarantee your approval. You don't need that extension if you pull a permit. That guarantees your, your zoning, your approval and everything. That permit is what gives you the approval. Time of application is a bit of a nuance, right? It is defined by case law. Case law does talk a lot about. Time of application again for the same reason, which is, right? If the municipality kind of wants to change the zoning and you want to get in under the clock. That time of application deeming that you have your application. And there's been tons of case law that goes back and forth about what does that actually mean, right? We have a checklist. Did you check all the boxes? It doesn't have to be quality, it has to be quantity where they're all done. And yes, when an application gets put on an agenda in the sixteen years that I've been here, they are complete. When you get that, when you get that notice, that means you're complete. Your time of application guarantees you to the zoning at that time. And the permit guarantees your approval, which is why it only makes sense. That is not zoning. That is not something you will find in an ordinance. Again, that is municipal land use law and case law.
Thank you, Director. We appreciate your time. Okay, anybody else before we open up public? We need to get this done. All right. So at this time, let's open it up for public comment. If anybody from the public wants to comment, please raise your hands. If you were calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hands.
Motive, Bill. Hi, Bill. I just need to swear in before you speak, okay? If you could raise your right hand. Do you swear any testimony you give tonight's going to be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And if you could just state and spell your name and, uh, give us your home address, please.
Yes, uh, my name is Bill Young, B I L L Y O U N G. Uh, my address is fourteen Avenue B, Bayonne, New Jersey. Uh, I'm actually here on behalf of the City Line Church, which is at fifteen ten Kennedy Boulevard.
Mr. Young, good evening. We have three minutes for you, sir.
Uh, thank you so much for, for taking time. I, I appreciate the, the thorough conversations back and forth regarding, regarding all of this. Um, I'm coming on here to, to, uh, speak again as on behalf of the City Line Church, uh, Bishop. Joshua Rodriguez and Pastor Paulo Rodriguez. Uh, City Line has served the Courage Woods community for almost, for over three decades. Um, we've been, uh, there doing many community outreach, uh, many, many community outreach events and, uh, serving the community as a whole. Our vast, a vast majority of our membership is from, uh, Jersey City. And in conversations with, with our members, most of them, almost all of them. Do oppose having a cannabis dispensary right across the street from, uh, catty corner from our, our, our church. Um, I know in the conversations here and, and being on these meetings, I know that. One of the restrictions is that there is a two hundred foot, I believe. Uh, a two hundred foot limitation from anywhere where there's a, a school or, or. Uh, with children or there's a daycare center or anything like that. City Line Church actually has a very vibrant and thriving youth ministry. Um, we meet on Friday nights. Uh, we have all the number of services during the week. So we have a lot of youth that are in the area on a regular basis. I, I know the rules, uh, I've heard the rules regarding, uh, uh, operation for the cannabis dispensaries. Uh, unfortunately, we know that the rules aren't always, aren't always followed in terms of what happens outside of the doors of the dispensary. Uh, so and do, and having a dispensary right across the street from a, a place where there are. Good number of youth will be gathering on a regular basis can be a dangerous, a dangerous aspect. Um, also another thing is that our, our ministry, uh, is a ministry of, of restoration. Meaning that we, we actually have a number of, of members, a number of guests that come through our doors that are battling past. Uh, substance abuse addictions, battling past, uh, uh, alcohol addictions. And unfortunately, we feel that, that having something that, that close can be very, very dangerous. Uh, very, can, can be dangerously attractive to people that are, that are trying to recover from. Uh, recover from those addictions. Uh, we do believe that cannabis is a gateway drug. I know that that may not be the popular, the popular belief, but we do believe that cannabis is, is a gateway drug. Um, so as, as a, an organization that, that has served this, this community for a number of years. We ask that you don't approve, uh, opening up right across the street from, from City Line Church. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. We appreciate your time. Um, just for the record, that two hundred foot rule covers K through twelve. Uh, it doesn't cover daycare. It's, um. Matt, correct me if I'm wrong. I think it only covers, um. Any, any school that's registered and I think the trigger is the drug preschool zone, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's move on with public comment, please.
Promoted Leo Bridgewater. Hey Leo, let me just swear in before you speak. If you could raise your right hand, do you swear any testimony you give tonight's going to be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And for the record, can you state and spell your name and give us your home address, please?
Absolutely. My name is Leo Bridgewater, L E O. First name, last name Bridgewater, B R I D G E W A T E R. I live at one three three Jackson Street, Trenton, New Jersey, zero eight six one one.
Thank you. Mr. Bridgewater, good evening. We have three minutes for you, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Again, folks, my name is Leo Bridgewater. Thank you for, uh, hearing me today. Chairman, uh, my name is, uh, Leo Bridgewater. I am a co-founding member of the Service Disabled Veterans and Cannabis Association. I also, in two thousand and sixteen. I testified in Senate Committee to have post-traumatic stress disorder. Added as a qualifying condition to the New Jersey Medical Marijuana Program. And Governor Chris Christie signed our bill into law, S two, three, four, five. Making, uh, PTSD, the first mental health qualifying condition. To be added to the New Jersey Medical Marijuana Program. I've since also served and helped with Governor Phil Murphy, uh, to expand the medical marijuana program to allow for. Uh, to expand the medical marijuana program to allow for seventeen other qualifying conditions. Um, I would also, and I also served as the National Director of Veterans Outreach with Minorities for Medical Marijuana. Um, we are a, we were a five oh one C three, uh, looking to help bring legislation, comprehensive legislation. To talk about social equity. Uh, I've also been, uh, influential in trying to bring this, uh, uh, to bring the industry online. I'm co-founder of Canagather New Jersey, which we were holding at the, uh, Beer Garden in Jersey City. Um, after listening to some of the, the testimony given, uh, regarding, uh, the, uh, Mister Orduna. And his business and, uh, thinking about how we brought this legislation through. One of the pitfalls to legis, to, uh, legalizing through ballot referendum is, uh, it gave, the legislative bill gave. Uh, municipalities a dangerous amount of power regarding cannabis legalization and how it would work in their jurisdictions. Uh, listening to some of these things, there's an integrity issue. That I think that is starting to rear its little ugly head based off of the way the wording is going and timelines. Uh, if you look at, uh, if you look in states pass who have legalized. Uh, this was actually a tactic that has been used by MSOs, which are multi-state operators. To slow up or retard the growth of the industry within a certain jurisdiction. I would advise this body to, uh, get in touch with the Cannabis Regulatory Commission. There is a office that actually deals directly with municipalities. To help iron out a lot of the problems that I heard tonight regarding the way the process is going. And you know, one minute it was three steps, next thing you know, it's four steps. Um, these are all things that require a particular type of nuance in terms of how you understand the way this work. Uh, if you are still using the term gateway drug, you've just dated yourself. Uh, that, that term we had, that's like someone who still calls black people color. We, we haven't used that term in years. And so you need to know how that works and, and, and all the things that the messages or the indirect messages. Uh, that you're sending when trying to get this legal, uh, get this done. Please get in touch with.
Thank you, sir, that was your three minute. We appreciate your time, though, you're doing the Lord's work as far as I'm concerned, sir.
Hey, praise the Lord.
Okay, let's move on with public combat, please.
Promoted Frank. Moving on to Gene Daly.
All right, thank you, what happened to Frank? We didn't get him?
Declined, we'll see if that was an accident on their behalf. Okay, he raised his hand again, so we'll give him another try after Gene.
Okay, and Gene, you're still sworn in?
Yes, I am.
Great, thanks.
And Ms. Daly, before, uh, we have you speak, we did speak at the last hearing. Uh, we do allow comment on. Generally, we allow comment once per application. I know there's some new information that came up tonight. Uh, we would have to limit your testimony to what was discussed tonight. Not what was discussed last meeting, and I, I hope you understand, um. A lot was discussed tonight, that being said, but, uh. Go, go ahead, the floor is yours for three minutes.
Okay, no, so much was discussed, I, I'm just. Staggered because this is a totally different aspect of any application. Uh, what I'd like to state is, this is a, an abject mess. The problem being with determining whether you, where, when you pull your permits is the, um. Designates when the pin is dropped is purely arbitrary. The problem being is, firstly, I, one thing I'd like to know is with, is if Matt Ward, when he made this. Statement on the record, was it? Because the planning board was having a hearing regarding this matter? Because if there isn't a hearing regarding that exact matter. How is the public supposed to know about our way in on their thoughts about this change? It has, there ha, public needs to be notified. Change needs to be argued and debated. And then, then something has to be put in writing somewhere. This is the problem I see here. Um, it's clear as day to me, I know other people feel otherwise. So, you know, you choosing that arbitrary date doesn't work. Using the planning, you know, pulling planning permits, I could pull a planning permit for someplace, anywhere. Without even having any cannabis control board, I need this, I need this, and the other thing. And I pretty much like, um, entered, bought a domain name. I find this really arbitrary and capricious. And it's a shame that this is getting to this point for this to happen. But it, it's, it's, this is the problem I have. With how this, this, this element was suddenly determined to be the indicator, whether it was made public. Whether it was put in writing, was, whether it was open for public ar- argument. And that is the problem I have, so I'm just gonna be quiet and that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Daly, we appreciate it.
Promoted Dennis.
Hi Dennis, how you doing?
Hello, good evening.
I just want to swear you in before you speak, all right? If you could raise your right hand. Do you swear any testimony you give tonight? It's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And for the record, can you state and spell your name and give us your home address, please?
My name is Dennis Feebo, I'm at twenty-six Livingston Avenue, Coney, New Jersey.
Can you say your last name again or spell it for me?
Feebo, F is in Frank, E B is in boy, O.
Thank you.
Mister Feebo, good evening, we have three minutes for you, sir.
All right, so, um, I'm a community activist, I've been, my organization. Uh, focuses on helping the justice impacted specifically in Jersey City and Hudson County. I work with corrections, I work with the family courts. And I've been a, an active participant in this process because I want to ensure. That remedy, what that was supposed to be established for the very community, uh, that we're speaking about today. Right, because I think that when we get stuck in the conversation of language, law, and ordinance, we start to forget that there's human beings that live in that community. The six hundred foot rule isn't just a stipulation, it was. It was supposed to be an argument about how many dispensaries should be open in our community. But if we're gonna get into the conversation about. The minutia of this and use it as leverage to interrupt, because this is what I'm observing as well, interruption. We had to, as a community, we also have to vet people that are doing business. I have never heard of Kushmart. I'm assuming any of the characters I've seen on this, on this call would never walk the very community that they're saying they want to open up their shop in. They never talked to any of the community leadership that I know of, I don't care about going to a church. We are the, I'm the leader of the credible messenger movement for Jersey City. We have representatives in every neighborhood, including Currys Woods, we do work with our justice impacted. I'm concerned that another shop, here we saying. A Latino-owned business, one of the only few businesses of color that got approved in this area. The one that got approved is now gonna get butted out, because this is what we're talking about, leave it up. For further conversation, which is probably gonna end up in court, wasting everybody's time, everybody's money. Everybody's energy and the time that's being wasted for us to be able to create remedy for the community that we work with. That's in pain, that's struggling, yeah, we got addiction, but yeah, we don't have any resource. This is the first time we get access to resource and now we gotta wait, because you worried about a date. Because you worried about what somebody else is gonna think. Yeah, it could be your jurisdiction and yeah, it's up to y'all vote. And I'm, I know a lot of y'all in the group, because I've been observing the entire quote, don't agree, so let it go up to the vote. If you guys voted through, you're gonna end up having to spend more time on this, way more time on this. Because it's now a loophole that sets a precedent for any other same thing, multi-nas, multi-state operators to come in and try to push out the small people. Let the one brother of color that got something in the area own their business. Why else do we have to keep debating this? And if it keeps moving further, it's gonna look like that's what it is, a racist act. So I'm calling for justice and I'm calling on y'all to accept, right? That you already know there's a business that's approved, you know it. Why, why waste time listening to another to create a precedent that's gonna cause you more work? We already got a plan for the community. I don't know who Kushmart is. We've never heard of them. That's my.
Thank you, sir, that, that's your three minutes, we appreciate it.
Promoted Jaclyn.
Hi Jaclyn, I just want to swear you in if you could raise your right hand. Do you swear any testimony you give tonight? It's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And for the record, can you state and spell your name and give us your home address, please?
Sure, Jaclyn Quaglianna, J A C Q U E L I N N E. Q U A G L I A N, Jaclyn Quaglianna. I'm from Soane Heights Charter School, one Roemer Avenue, Jersey City, New Jersey.
Thank you.
Good evening, ma'am, we have three minutes for you.
Chairman, I just have a question for you. Um, I was at the, um. The cannabis meeting and I was there when we were going for, when Kushmart was going for the approval. They're going for a consumption lounge that they tabled at that meeting. Because Jersey City doesn't have any rules and regulations for the consumption lounge. So my question to you is, if you pass them today. When do we get to talk about the consumption lounge that's there in their event planning room?
So there is no consumption lounge, lounge in front of us tonight. I have.
I'm sorry, it is in their application.
Uh, but it is not in front of us tonight, i- it's not permitted right now.
Hmm.
Um, I cannot comment on it until they come back with an application for it. If they do come back with an application for a consumption lounge. Um, my only. Public comments are on these meetings, I don't meet behind closed doors with anyone.
I know.
Open, I'm an open book, um.
Yeah, I just, because our school lawyer also wrote a letter to the planning board asking that same question. So I just want to make sure that this is just for retail, not just because obviously we don't agree that, with that, because for the school. But if there is any portion for the lounge, they would have to come back to you and then we would all be notified again.
They would have to come back to us and you would be notified again.
Okay, that, that's all I have. But again, we do propose it, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Promoted Santiago.
And Saman, if you're there, you can, there we go.
Good evening, you guys hear me?
I can hear you, but I cannot see you, are you able to turn your video on?
Uh, I can try.
I believe in you.
There we are.
All right, we got you. Now, I can see you and hear you, so I just want to swear you in if you could raise your right hand. Do you swear any testimony you give tonight? It's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And for the record, can you state and spell your name and give us your home address, please?
My name is Simon Santiago, spelled S A Y M O N. I, uh, I'm a homeowner in, uh, seventy-four College Street, Jersey City, New Jersey, oh seven three oh six.
Thank you.
Uh.
Brother Santiago, give me, give me one second, good to see you as always, brother.
Same here, my brother.
Just for the record, I do know Mister Santiago, um, he is a union member. Uh, a different union than my own. We do recognize each other as brothers, but, uh, that being said, we're different unions. Um, his appearance tonight was not discussed with me prior to the meeting. Um, it does not affect my opinion tonight, being that I know Mister Santiago and, uh. Brother, if you could confirm the same, that we have not discussed your appearance tonight at all.
That's correct, I could confirm that.
Okay, appreciate it, and I have three minutes for you.
Hold on, Mister Commissioner, Commissioner Lasting?
Go ahead.
Lasting? Um, you're calling you Commissioner tonight, I don't know why, but, you know, Chairman Lasting?
All good, you moan me, bro.
It's twice that you brought this up, 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 being a member of the union and, um, I also. Think I'm gonna take this opportunity right now, echo deep into it, I'll do that later on. And I am also a member of a. Union, Construction Trades Union, and I've also had the very privilege and honor to be spoken with Mister Santiago. On a job, um, very good man, but besides that. We also never had a discussion about this. I did not know you were gonna be online tonight. And, um, later on, I will get more into detail. Of my years' experience on this planning board. And my stance with unions and other jobs and other applications that have come before us. Now let's move on, uh, but I want to put that on the record.
All right, thanks, Ed, we appreciate it, and.
All right, I have to.
It's a, it's a pleasant surprise, too.
Right, so I have to confess, I know, uh. Brother Santiago as well, he's an integral part of our community. But I can attest the, with integrity, that he nor I have spoken about this matter. That is correct, I wanted to state that for the, uh, for the record as well, I swear that, um. No one here tonight, other than my current employer, um, Ausvert. Um, knows that I was gonna be here tonight. Yes, I'm currently employed by him, working over at his property and I'm honored. To, uh, do so, not only be, because he's a veteran, but, uh, Hispanic. And this project affects me directly. Um, I don't understand why we're going through this. And I just have one question, and that is, um, how does holding applicants accountable? Uh, compared to holding the planning board members accountable for not regulating ordinances that they pass? I mean, if something is, is, is there, it's there and, and that's that, that's all I, I have. And everyone have a good night, everyone stay blessed. And if you could please, um, answer that, I, I appreciate it.
You too, brother, always a pleasure. Um. I don't know, Santo, do you want to address that? I, I don't even know where to start.
If you address anything you want me to address, Chairman, uh. I think it's, I think it's pretty clear, I understand everybody's position. Uh, ordinances are written, then ordinance get interpreted. To zoning ordinance, sets out what the. Requirements are to make it a conditional use in the zone. And when we get into case law and the application rules. That's how we interpret the ordinance, it's, uh. Outside of that, I don't really. Have anything else to add, it's, it's. A creature of the case law, there's a body of cases on the subject. Not necessarily with respect to cannabis, since this is obviously a new area, but with respect to. Timing of applications and when rights best and don't best and protections from zoning and, and how to interpret zoning ordinance, so. That, that's all I can say to everybody, I understand. What everybody is saying, however, it's. Courts have to interpret things and they do that and they. Issue opinions, that's, that's how the law works, so. You start with something as simple as the law is, and then. The ninety thousand of us that are licensed here in the state of New Jersey. Argue about it. And the judges decide it, that's, that's the system.
Ninety thousand, Santo.
Last I heard, it's probably ninety-five today.
Amazing.
They don't seem to retire. I've got an episode that's eighty-three years old.
It's, it's too easy, that's why. All right, um, on with public comment, please.
Miss Daly.
Chairman, can I just, uh, direct something to Council?
Sure.
He's got his opinion. So I, out of kicks and giggles, right? I go on the city's website and I pull up the city of Jersey City Planning Board's. Uh, website and they're frequently asked questions about cannabis, which was updated November eighteenth, twenty twenty-two. And it says, how to obtain local approval. Local approval can be, uh, will require two applications and a local support resolution to the state governing body. First, applications cannabis control and, uh, planning. But then, here's the funny part, the, uh. Last, or next to last sentence, it says, the last two sentences, following. A favorable approval by the planning board, the Division of Commerce will initiate a resolution. favorable approval by the planning board, the Division of Commerce will initiate a resolution of support to be sent to the municipal council. After gaining local support, proof of state license approval is required to pull permits with the Division of Zoning. So the sequencing and the common parlance that's put on our own city's website as of recent, as recently as November eighteenth, twenty twenty-two lays out a process that seems different from the standard we're holding to this application.
But it does list pulling permits.
After.
I don't agree with what you're saying, Commissioner.
Well, then you did, then what you're disagreeing with is the city's planning department. It's black and white right here. So what I'm saying is, is what I read right off the website and doesn't, when I talk in case, what's just for common people looking to do business with Jersey Prosper, right? And what I'm saying is, is that this says two applications before you can pull permits.
Okay. I don't disagree that you need to have the licensure in place before you can pull permits. I agree with that.
But then, then that's the underlying point here tonight for Mr. Vitolo's client is the court here seems to have gone before the horse. In that permits were pulled and he doesn't even have planning approval.
They were not pulled. Mr. Vitolo's client has no permits.
And not get permits until he has all of the licensing approvals.
Yeah, he has no permits yet. I, I haven't signed any paperwork for him. I haven't signed a, a site plan yet. He has no permits.
Okay, but then the cannabis dispensary does?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's, that's spelled out in the timeline.
They have all four boxes checked and barring the moral applications. I love Pastor Joshua, Bishop Joshua, and Pastor Paul. I love, love them. And Soring Heights is a great charter school, and we hope no kids get hooked on dope. But you know, at the end of the day, you know, what the laws are in pertaining to the neighborhood commerce, it seems like there's a clear winner.
Uh, Ms. Dowling, you are promoted. Thank you for your patience.
Oh, not a problem. No, no, I'll make it quick because everybody said some great things. And I do know City Line Church. A little bit of my history for those that don't know me, those that do know, I used to be a school teacher here in the Jersey City school system. A housing advocate at Curry Woods. That was my second home. As a, as a matter of fact, I'm still an employee for the Housing Authority now. And also, I was a correction officer. I don't agree with the church saying that it would be a problem having that dispensary just being out there because that gives them the opportunity to know how to go about doing things legally and the right way, and we can keep a better eye on our children. So that I want to put out there a quick fastener. I do support. I'm hoping that both of them can open up. I hope they're not six hundred feet from each other. The more, the better, because we need more regulated honest places for people to go to say, you know, I want to get clean, or if I need to do that, at least I have a resource in the community. Second of all, is there someplace that I can see the agenda of where we're at on it? Because I got on the call twenty minutes late, and I think you guys passed P two-two dash one four-six. Have you discussed that one at all?
Ms. Dowling, I hate to break it to you, we're on the second.
So you haven't even addressed P two-two dash one four-six?
We've passed P twenty-three dash zero one eight and P twenty-two dash zero eight zero. We are up to number nine on the agenda, P twenty-two dash one thirty-four. We've got twenty-nine applications to go.
Oh, before we even get to one forty-six?
No, we're gonna we are low and slow tonight. We are low and slow.
I don't want to miss this because if I need to write my comment in, then I will. You know, but I just want, like, can you flash the agenda? Where can I get the agenda?
We, we don't, believe it or not, we don't have that capability. You can go on the city's website. We have a data portal that has the the agenda on it.
She's speaking about item number twelve?
Yeah.
Yes, talking about case number twelve.
Yeah.
Communal Paul Avenue.
Yes, yes, that's right around the corner from me. One thirty-nine Woodward, four seventeen Communal Paul Avenue.
To be honest, I should have been talking about that about an hour ago. We're trying. We're trying to get there.
I doubt if we're going to get there tonight, man.
Yeah, it's not looking good. Um, but thank you.
Right?
Ms. Dowling and Chairman has the ability to change the agenda. That's the next case.
We're going to get through this first, though. We're gonna, we're taking baby steps tonight, man.
But we normally stop taking testimony or calling applications in about fifteen minutes.
Okay, all right. Well, I thank you guys for the opportunity. And like I said, I, I've been in that community. I know what those dispensaries are designed to do, and I just hope that they do the job that they, they can do for our community.
Appreciate it. Appreciate your comments. Promoted Frank.
I see Hugh up here, too.
Oh, well, yeah, Hugh and then Frank. Mike, I apologize, man. I need to get you a break. I can't believe it's quarter to ten already.
I think, I mean, we got Hugh and Frank here.
I'm here.
Hey, Frank, can you just give us one second? I think Hugh was up before you. He got lost.
That's okay. He can go first if he wants. It's fine. I'm fine with it. I can wait.
I'm with me.
Get to you, Frank. All right, Frank, you're going to go first. If you could just raise your right hand, I swear you in. Do you swear any testimony you give tonight is going to be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And for the record, can you state and spell your name and give us your home address, please?
Yeah, Frank Robertson, seventeen oh eight Kennedy Boulevard, Union City, New Jersey.
Thank you.
Mr. Robertson, good evening. I apologize if we lost you before, but we have three minutes for you now, sir.
Okay, thank you so much, Commissioner. I have, I have a couple of statements. I went to the July fourteen, twenty twenty-one meeting with the city council, and I seen the attorney, Nick Strasser, said in his council meeting with the council on twenty-one dash zero five three that the ordinance is with the state, and the state is the entity of this, the state is, the ordinance runs with the entity of the state. And it says that the definition of the state in terms of what the state has as definition, the city council cannot change it. And also, the city cannot make it more relaxed or more stringent. So when Mr. Ward said that he could go in there and say that the permits would be pulled, that that's absolutely what he could not do. Because it actually says it by one of your attorneys to the city council. And also, I hear you guys stating twenty-one dash zero five three, which says, Section D on B, separation distance, the main entry door of any cannabis establishment subject to class five, including microbusiness, shall be separated by a distance, shall be separated by a distance of six hundred feet. Now, shall means that you can't, it has to be six hundred and one and over. I also know that you guys know what the distance is with the liquor license. It's seven hundred and fifty feet. So now, if I was, if I want to get a liquor store and I want to move across the street, could I do it? Because the attorney is saying that, that you could be within six hundred feet. In this ordinance, it says shall. And the entity, again, is the state. So this ordinance cannot be changed. It can't be modified because it runs parallel to the entity, which is the state. So, as I said in the meetings, and all the attorneys online, I'm not an attorney, but I do know how to read. And I went in, in front of the CCB Board and told them in June, July, August, and September, and November, that it was six hundred feet. So the director, Maynard Woodson, got the twenty-one dash zero five three, and he actually sent it out to all of the applicants. So when you send your application in, they send it back to you with twenty-one dash zero five three. And if you can read, at the bottom of it says, shall be six hundred. That is the distance. And if you look at the last line in the CRC, it says the CRC, if you don't complete any part of the application, you will not get the license from the state. So I would like to tell you, attorneys, I'm not an attorney, but read the law.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate your time.
And then I think we got Hugh up, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Hi, Hugh. You able to turn your video on there?
Oh, yeah.
Great, I could see you. I can hear you. I just want to swear in if you could raise your right hand.
Sure.
Do you swear any testimony you give tonight is going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And for the record, can you state and spell your name and give us your home address, please?
Sure, Hugh Giordano, fifty-seven Argyle, Blackwood, New Jersey.
Mr. Giordano, good evening. We have three minutes for you, sir.
Thank you very much. Tonight, I'm here as a representative of the United Food and Commercial Workers Union, UFCW. The UFCW is the official labor union that represents cannabis workers from seed to sale, under the guise of the AFL-CIO. And we're very proud to represent the workers here in this state currently in the medical and adult use market. I guess, you know, I'm kind of in a rough place here because I have two employers here that are going to be UFCW represented. And I'm in a, in a rough place. And I thought here, what can I do, right, to help as the union guy? You know, the one thing that I was, you know, thinking during this whole time was that there was just a lot of confusion. So here's what we know. I have many more unionized employers coming down the road here. Folks that are both MSOs and small business owners. You know, I have a lot of respect for both employers. Osbert has been an excellent person, a human being. You know, I know that he's looking a little upset here right now, but he's worked years on this as a working-class owner. So I understand his frustration. You know, Osbert is absolutely right as well, that he has signed a project labor agreement where he's currently working with the building trades, too. So this is a shovel-to-sale job, where good economic well-being will happen because they have living wages. And on top of that, that is going to help your economic zoning policies for the future. Because these jobs now will bring foot traffic and hopefully a young and inspiring crowd for the future as well. And the same thing with Kushmart. They are a larger company. But at the same time, they have made a commitment to make sure that we have good jobs in this, in the city. Make sure that these are workers are treated with respect and dignity. Healthcare, these things matter, right? And this is what Jersey City is looking for. And this is exactly what the state wants. This is exactly what the Senator, President, Senate President wants, the Assembly President, and the Governor. I can guarantee you that. So what I would suggest, if, if anything, as as this guy that I am here, I want to see both of them be okay. And I would ask that you please do every attempt you can to make sure that these folks in any way possible, under the law, can be made whole. In saying that, I also want to say that we have to be prepared for the future. Again, we have double-digit employers coming down the road here. So I would ask that this is without a doubt. It's like, you know, doing a collective bargaining agreement. The next one, you realize there were some problems, we got to do something to fix it ASAP. I would suggest that, please, please do what you can to make sure that these employers, small business or MSO, are very clear in any way going forward, so we don't have this. Because now what this is doing is wasting money and time from creating union jobs. That's all we're doing right now with this stuff. And that's how I look at it, because that's my job. So I, I'm very clear that I, I hope that you'll please make the attempts. Because now it's hurting working-class people in Jersey City. It's hurting our union members. So on behalf of the UFCW, on behalf of the AFL-CIO and the building trades, we please ask that you do all you can to make sure we resolve this and make them whole. Thank you.
Thank you, Brother Giordano.
Thank you.
I do, I do want to catch up with you one of these days, face to face, talk about organizing, how you organize. So, anyway. Anybody else from public? If you'd like to comment, please raise your hand. If you are calling in, you could press star nine to raise your hands.
Chairman, seeing no one else from the public wishing to speak, I move to close.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Public is closed. Mike, can I get you a break right now before we go into deliberations?
I wouldn't mind it.
Let's take five, everybody.
You're a real champ, Mike.
Mike, we appreciate it, man. I know the stuff on you. It's nine fifty-five. We'll be back at ten o'clock.
You're a trooper, Mike.
Thanks, I'm not volunteering though, all you guys are volunteers, so we appreciate your service.
Hmm, your hands though, geez.
Yeah, they're a little tired.
Heard you got a new thing that just picks up audio and you just make sure that it's typing the right words, is that, that not true?
Yeah, no, it's not true at all. We don't like to talk about those.
All right, guys, can we come back to order again? Mike, I'm sorry we didn't get to you earlier, I apologize.
No worries, we are caught up in the flow of things.
Yeah. All right.
Mr. Chairman, could I make a thirty-second statement?
I, I would allow that, and I'll give that opportunity to your compadre, Mr. Aloya, and and then we can go into board deliberation, and hopefully we get to some kind of resolution either way tonight.
So Chairman, let Mr. Aloya go first, and then we'll give Mr. Vitola the final say.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Board. First off, I certainly appreciate the time. Through all the testimony this evening, I think the board clearly understands the issues that are before it. It is our opinion that foremost, this application was not submitted before the Cannabis Place had all of its approvals, the three approvals it needed. I think it's also clear that the pending process, while I know this body maybe discussed at some other meeting, the rule with regard to permits, and the fact that permits had to be pointed out, as indicated during my questioning of Mr. Ward, who clearly testified, you know, credibly and, and clearly, and honestly, in my opinion, that there, there isn't a, a fully thought-out procedure. What would happen in the case of someone renting a building or owning a building that didn't need any construction permits? You have to remember, these applications aren't really for construction, these applications are for approval to sell retail cannabis. And therefore relying on the permit not only is against the ordinance, but it has not been made part of the procedure. I also believe that if you speak to the city, the city will actually indicate contrary to the, the pulling of the permits. So the pulling of the permits foremost shouldn't be followed, but also if you look at the timeline of events, and when my client tried to pull permits in November, that was even, even that was before, assuming that you're going to follow the permits. With regard to time of application, we're not a hundred percent clear, because Mr. Ward again testified honestly. He doesn't know when the application before you was substantially completed, but we do know that it was, it had to be after the application fee was paid for in September, as well as late September, when the sewer and the, and the other liens were paid off. And then you even have different documents being submitted in October, and then it starts to get, I'll call it gray after that, and when the application could have been considered complete. But the bottom line of this application is this board's job is to go ahead and approve applications that are rightfully before it, after applying the laws, the rules, the regulations and ordinances that are opposed both by the state, and in this case, the city, in this case, the city passed an ordinance that said, within six hundred feet, you're not allowed to approve, you, you shall not allow more than two, you know, door-to-door, two applications to be permitted. My client received his approvals. This board gave the approvals. It was before the application was completed by the current application, and therefore, this application should simply be denied. That's all I have to say, I understand the board understands the argument, so I certainly appreciate your time. And again, thank you for your service, I know you're all volunteers, and I tried to be as quick as possible today, so thank you for the time.
Thank you, Council, we appreciate it. Mr. Vitola, floor is yours, sir.
Yeah, great, and I'll be very brief, and, and again, I echo Mr. Aloya's comments, thank, I thank the board for what was a longer than we anticipated hearing, and all their excellent questions, and their attention to detail, which is impressive. Although not even relevant here this evening, Kushmart is a female minority-owned business. I'm going to say that again, Kushmart is a female minority-owned business. So any remarks made this evening that, you know, they're somehow disadvantaging one minority group or the other, I don't think is really relevant or before this board, but I need to note that for the record. Kushmart followed all the rules. We presented an attractive facility with a quality operating plan and a first-class security plan. If you recall, hearing from Mr. Orlando, I think someone from the council even called in and said he should probably consult with the city, his presentation was so first-class. Regarding the pin in the map, as you heard from Mr. Ward, and then we even heard from the planning director who called in, this is a zoning issue, the time of application rule has been around as long as zoning's been around. There has to be a way to protect applicants and, and affirm their position in the process here. The decision was made during an open hearing, it was even posted on YouTube. It was not a closed-door, private meeting, it's a rule that applicants are well aware of. And we had our application filed incomplete before permits were pulled by our neighbor. That's it, plain and simple. We followed the rules, and the jurisdiction was affirmed here, I think at the first, our first hearing. And so we have every right to be here and to proceed in the process. And we wish Mr. R. Dooney all the best in his business, I'm sure he's going to be very successful. And I hope he feels the same, because that was a decision the city made on how to be equitable in the process. And just as Mr. Alampi had said, it's down the road, three, four years from now, there won't be facilities within six hundred feet of people that are already pinned. But you had this, I mean, it's the chicken or the egg, you had to start somewhere. So the question was, how do you protect people who start out in the process, just as you pass an ordinance and get moving in the process? That's the, really, it's a very logical and well-thought-out way to handle this initial round of applications. It, it wasn't going to, to be a race in, in that sense, because there was a lot of moving parts, and everyone was feeling their way, so my client is very appreciative of your time. We, we are looking forward to opening and having a secure, safe business in Jersey City, so again, thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Council. Before we go into any board deliberations, I do want to thank both applicants tonight. We're signing project labor agreements, that's always a plus, it doesn't enter into my decision, but it's great news. So, moving forward, does anybody, anybody from the board have any questions? Do we want to get into a board deliberation before any motions?
The only thing I would say is, is based on Mr. Vitola's comment, is, you know, what I mean, in terms of the time. You know, I mean, because I think, so if this application is approved tonight, we have, I mean, they seem to be within six hundred feet of each other. How does that get resolved?
That is for a higher pay grade than me. I, I think our, you know, Santo laid it out for us, this is in front of us legally tonight. And that's as far as I can go, I, I think that's as far as anybody on the board can go. I, I don't know what happens going forward.
Because Commissioner told us, one question that Commissioner Nimski just asked, does that become, and also brought it out clearly before too, I bet that, that if they do get passed, it doesn't mean that both establishments might not open for business, is it? We're just voting on how these other establishments will move forward. Who? Counsel, who makes that decision later, maybe Matt Walker asks, is that a city decision, or does that become a state decision?
Is what a decision, if both can open?
Yeah, but then six hundred feet of each other.
So what this board would be deciding is that because of the time in which the applications were placed into the pipeline, they don't violate the six hundred feet. And they both would open for business, assuming they move forward with the process. If Kushmart decides to abandon, they decide to abandon, but I use Kushmart as the example, because it seems that the other establishment has pulled permits and has, I would expect started their outfit.
But counsel, to that point, if the cannabis dispensary has pulled permits, has checked all four boxes, planning, cannabis control board, municipal council, and, and the state, and they're ready to go, they got project wager, labor agreements, they, you know, it's all set in the pipeline. I mean, how does, you know, how can we, knowing that there's a six hundred-foot, I mean, shouldn't the other applicant get a waiver from zoning?
No, because Kushmart was in the pipeline, they started the process, that's what the whole point of the time of application rule is all about. When did you start the process to protect you and therefore have vested zoning rights? That's what we're talking about.
So, and just for my ignorance, I'm just an educator, a guy who lives in Jersey City. On April twenty-seventh of two thousand and twenty-two, applications were pulled for planning and cannabis control by the Cannabis, Cannabis Place. They get, they get their planning board approval on May twenty-fourth, before, well, obviously, they're up here for tonight, they both get approved on the Satan date of July eleventh for Cannabis Control Board. So, I mean, how, I mean, I, I don't, I mean, I'm not sure how that timeline, if the Cannabis Place puts in two applications ahead, plus, they got municipal council approval, I'm not sure that Kushmart has. And, and lastly, they pulled the permits. So where, where am I missing in, in terms of the timeline?
So the, the timeline got flipped somewhere along the way. When, when we started this process, we were the first entity to start approving cannabis dispensaries, there was no Cannabis Control Board. City Council was not hearing these yet. So at the time of the Cannabis Place coming to us, we were the only game in town. When Kushmart got the opportunity, the Cannabis Control Board was in place. And they had to go to the Cannabis Control Board first. That's how that whole timeline got shifted around, i- it's not that, you know, if you look at it from one aspect, you go, oh, you know, Kushmart is way behind the eight ball on, on Cannabis Place. They're not, they were heard at this, this, the Cannabis Control Board on the same night.
That's the only thing. I'm sorry, Chairman.
But it's, it's just that the, the process got flipped. It's still a, a process in, you know, in, in, in the works here, it wasn't set in stone yet when this started. We were the only board available at the time, that's why we gave first approval.
I like that.
We have to remember the history, right? So the history is, the legislation came out after recreational or adult-use marijuana was permissible. So, this wasn't happening five years ago, as we all know. Once the legislation came out that said, yes, adult-use recreational cannabis is now legal in the state of New Jersey, everybody had to put the processes in place. Jersey City didn't impale and set up the Cannabis Control Board, and applicants were looking to start the process, so they came to the planning board first, under the ordinance. But, in a very short window, the Cannabis Control Board was established. People were in panel, they actually had members, and it was determined, well, we shouldn't further overload the planning board with more applications if you need to get this approval also, so go there first. Because if for some reason you don't get the approval of the Cannabis Control Board, there's no reason to go to the planning board versus doing it the other way. That's why the process got switched from coming to planning first, and then going to cannabis control. There was no option for it, but again, assuming everything is equal, if Kushmart hadn't started the process, and they decided to death, let's go look at Jersey City. And they did their due diligence, and they saw at a location up the street from the target location that they're looking at, oh, this place has the state license, the planning board approval, the city approval, and their permits and our outfitting. Well, they would be on notice that they are violating that six hundred-foot and they would not go to our board, they would wind up going to the zoning board, they can still bring the application to open the establishment, they would be under the jurisdiction of the zoning board, not the planning.
But since they're within that six hundred feet, and since the Cannabis Dispensary has lined everything up, here's where I'm going, is this public speaker, you echoes my sentiment, I'd love to see both of them flourish, but not necessarily under these conditions, I mean, if they're, you know, we're way, I mean, if they were six hundred, you know, and because I think from the beginning of this, and I've been on the planning board since this thing has evolved, and on paper, the Cannabis Control Board existed, it just didn't have a full operating body. When we finally get up there, and then when we heard tonight from the attorney, a lawyer, saying gets there, and the question comes up, but they said, oh, that, that comes back to us, although we had already opined on it, we already voted on it. So let me ask this question, if we voted no, and wished, you know, Mr. Vitola and his clients all the best, and, and said, you know, is there another spot? What is the consequence of that?
I think the consequence is, Mr. Vitolo files a lawsuit saying, I was already in the pipeline, the time of application rule applies. A lawsuit saying, I was already in the pipeline. The time of application rule applies. And court overrule the board. I think that's what happens. And. We continue to say that the time of application jurisdiction is right before this week. They have been in the pipeline. For months. Many, many months.
And but to that point, and what I guess was confusing to me and a number of people spoken, probably a number of listeners. Is that Mr. Ordonor and his company. Have been in the pipeline, got through the pipeline and are on the other side of the pipeline. And yet we're saying that, okay, uh. Now this shop, even under the current laws, can exist without any waiver?
That, that's what the time of application.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know how to answer that commissioner. Yes, the answer is yes. That's the time of application. What we're saying by the time of application is. There was no establishment within six hundred feet of the Kushmart site. That's what we're saying.
Until permits were applied for.
Correct. Which was. Less than thirty days ago. I shouldn't say applied for issue, right?
Issue.
Those were thirty days ago. But even if you went back to when the permit was applied for, even if you gave them the benefit of the doubt that it was November. Matt testified that the application. Was submitted and the fee paid in September. It's now. February.
We, we asked for the timeline and we got the timeline. That's, you know, to me, that's.
I mean, the only other, the only thing mentioned in the timeline. Uh, pertaining to this, I mean, uh, under the narrative. Was January when, but it doesn't mention. When Kushmart, it gives Kushmart at both apply for cannabis. Control Kushmart uh files application for class five retailer. Kushmart paid their application fee. Review plan are confirmed hearing date scheduled for January twenty-fourth, but isn't say. When they uh drew their permits. And or applied for them, I should say, my.
Commissioner, you're, you're, you're mixing, you're mixing two different things. It does not matter when Kushmore applies for permits. They have not applied for permits. They cannot.
Right, without.
Uh, the question, the question about Kushmore is when did they file their application? To the planning board? When was their application deemed substantially complete? Mr. Ward testified that the answer to that question is September of two thousand and twenty-two. In September of two thousand and twenty-two. The cannabis dispensary. Did not have permits, had not applied for permits. So Kushmore is allowed to proceed with the planning board application. Because Kushmore is not violating. The six hundred feet. Because the cannabis dispensary. In September of two thousand and twenty-two. Doesn't actually exist on the map yet. They don't use on the map until January.
Only under permits, but by September of two thousand and twenty-two, they had planning board approval, cannabis control board approval. And municipal council approval.
That is true.
Agreed, but their permits are not granted at that point.
No, I get it.
Or apply for.
So they, well, now they already have it. Uh, okay, I mean, for me, if you've got all four boxes checked. And you get the permits, even if they're in today. Then where's the timestamp argument?
So what happens to the pending application? All of a sudden it gets thrown out because. From the time you filed until you actually got to the board. Something changed? That's what, that's what the time of application is all about. And I'll tell you this commissioner. The rule used to be. That. What happened that the hearing is what mattered. The ordinance ineffective the hearing zoning ordinance. So if you had filed an application. The city or the municipality could change the zoning ordinance on you. To stop you from. Having an as of right application. And that's when the time of application rule came and the court said, wait a minute. That's not fair. They've spent all this time in the lead up. And now that you see the application, you don't like it, so you're going to change. The zoning so that. That's not permitted.
Yeah, that's what Tanya had said in.
I can, that's why we go by time of application.
That's why we go by time of application. So the two principles were time of application, time of decision. And quite frankly, Commissioner, I can't think of a fairer way to do it when there is a rush. Under new legislation, that's. Because we're just. When people talk about what's arbitrary, what's arbitrary is wide case. You know. Whatever is. Case number eighty-one. The same one that came in on the same day because it was under the pile. Is case eighty-two. How does that happen? Somebody put the page, I mean, time states. You know, it's a rush to the door though.
Uh, agreed. All right, anybody else? Anybody else want to ask questions before we get to a motion? Are we going to get to a motion tonight?
Uh, we'd like to entertain a motion, Chair.
Did you, did you want my uh to just testimony real quick? I don't know if I finished up the return.
Yeah, Matt, do you want to finish up?
Yeah, all I just wanted to say was that, looking at the transcript, um, Commissioner Gangdan wasn't at the last meeting. I just wanted to make sure that. Whether or not she had reviewed it or if she's sitting out this one.
Um, actually, I was gonna put that on the record that I did review the transcripts.
Okay, great. Um, and. Other than that, I, we prepared our first staff memo. Uh, that was dated. Uh, I'm sorry, January twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three. And we, if the board does make a motion to approve, we did recommend five uh conditions. And I just want to know if the council had reviewed those and if uh they agreed.
Yes, we agree.
That's, that's all I have.
All right, thank you, Matt. So I guess we're there. Let's um, I want to entertain a motion.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P two-two dash one three four is presented to the board this evening.
Do I have a second for anyone?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval. Okay. Um, Dr. Desai.
Hi.
Commissioner Green.
Hi.
Commissioner Gangd.
I just want to say, I want to thank the public for um their public comments this evening. I know this um was quite a bit of a lengthy um process. Um, but I just want to thank them for coming out and voicing their concerns as well. Um, unfortunately, my vote tonight is no.
Okay, uh Vice President, Dr. Gonzalez.
I will abstain.
Commissioner Lipsky.
No.
Commissioner Cruz.
Uh, he took ill and stepped off. He texted me.
Do we have David up there anymore?
No, he took ill and stepped off.
Okay, um, I'll talk to David tomorrow. He should uh.
He'll let you know, Chairman.
Yeah, he should let me know. Okay, absent. Commissioner Torres.
This is, this is really a tough one. Uh. Very tough, confusing. Um. Timeline and everything I. Uh. I don't see um. We never know when somebody's gonna build something. Oh, yeah, I think. I appreciate the people that came out. We should uh, some of the union brothers that spoke, um. It is a good thing, both, for both companies, um. But um. I think that, I think. The timeline of a permit and stuff, I mean, confusing, and I don't see how this other person. Would that it's already building his place cannabis. Uh, spot. Has a chance of not being able to do accomplish it, um. But at the same time, that's not what I'm voting on, voting on is a um. Whether. The application, I'd like to put his application in. Um. On one note, no quickly, stay with minority, um, women. Minority fat. Uh, Latino fat. Whatever minority women are, they, what they're racist, I um. I have a problem with that right now because I would like to see somebody from Jersey City. Born, raised, yeah, a long time. Not two years. I just showed up because there's money to be made. And there's big bucks on it, so. That part of me um is not going to be casted on my vote right now. Irrelevant. Just here because there's a chance and opportunity. You haven't been here. That long. Especially with Kevin Woods, you couldn't even walk around that neighborhood. So with that though. Considering um a comment made by one of the speakers. Bucks for the collection office. Yeah, I think we're gonna need to vote for them. So I wish you luck, court. I wish luck and hopefully the state would approve. And I'm gonna have to vote yes on this one and allow it to go and let offer to be built. We need them. They said that we needed, it used to be there. And um. Move forward to the two of them getting built. And allowing Jersey City to correct its mistake and go forward and making it clear. And like they said, and hopefully in another five years. This won't be an argument. But right now it is. Allow them to be both built. They both did this. They both did. Their applications. By the law and by the guidance of the planning staff. So let's remember that, put that on the record. Okay? Real quickly too, I want to put on the record. That I am part of a union and if I'm not gonna get into my background and details. But if anybody wants to look at my ten year history in this board. I'm voting on applications. You will see without a doubt. Has never been an influence on my vote. I voted for stuff. The city. For people in this city that I felt personally. But I wanted to vote no, but I had to vote yes, that's what, that's what uh. Planning board and that's what was at the front of me. And that was the vote that was needed. So I want to put that on the record too. And if anybody ever wants to know in detail. You can always find Commissioner Charles, I do look at Jersey City, so. I'll let you know in detail. Where I stand with my local and where I stand with Jersey City. I'll make that very clear. That's, that's not a problem. But um, once again, I think I'm gonna have to vote yes on this one. And then both hopefully, both establishments will, will can be.
And Chairman Langston.
I, I gotta say, Eddie, that was uh business agent material right there.
I'll leave that for you, my brother.
Um. I, agreed. I, I can't echo that enough, um. You know, I'll stand on that street corner any day with you and uh we'll have that conversation with any union member that wants to come along. Um. And I, I do want to thank my brothers that came out tonight. Spoke, stood up. Um, it's always good to. Hear a union member here. Um. And I know, believe me, I know what time you guys get up. I get up the same time. I'm happy to see that uh you guys came out and saw me and Eddie do every other Tuesday. And um. I, you know, the members of the public, always appreciated. Uh, I think this was a good. Back and forth tonight. Uh, I can't believe we, we spent three hours on a cannabis application. Um. Let me get the easy part out of the way. I think the time of application. Uh, was sealed for me last meeting. I, I think as of February seventh. Uh, I was convinced that the timeline worked. For the applicant. Um. So, that being said, you know, the back and forth tonight did not change my mind. The time is clear, the timeline's clear. Um. Once you put that aside. It's an easy application. It's like any other cannabis application in front of us, um. They, they check all the boxes for us, um. You know, we heard in-depth security. Testimony last meeting. That was enlightening and um. I think it's a great addition to the city. Uh, I hope they can both work concurrently. If that's the road forward. And um. You know, I wish everybody luck. And um, my vote is aye.
Okay, so motion passes to approve. We had one absent, one abstaining, four yeses and two nos. So motion carries.
All right, thank you, Cam. Everybody, thank you. Thank you for coming out, um.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, board. Really appreciate it. Have a great rest of the week. Yes, thank you.
Enjoy. Um, all right, Cam, Matt. I think Tanya reached out to you guys. It is uh ten thirty-seven. We obviously know what that means. I, I thought we'd get further down the list tonight. I can't believe it's three items we got done, but uh. Do we want to bring up some applicants?
Yes, I have correspondence from Attorney McCann. Um, and he has agreed to carry the four cases he's representing tonight. Uh, with preservation of notice to March seventh of two thousand and twenty-three. Um. So those are.
Go ahead, Cam, I'm sorry.
So that is case P twenty-two dash two-one-seven, one fifty-one Yale Avenue. That's case P twenty-two dash zero seven seven. Address two fifty-one to two fifty-seven Grand Street. That's case P twenty-two dash two twenty-one. Uh, seventy Mallory. And that's case P twenty-two dash two hundred twenty-two, address is four hundred Clermont. Um. And, and uh, I will have to bring up uh Attorney Lean, um. And Frank. Because they want to go on the record. Um, for their applicants, so one moment. So Fran, Frank Regan promoting.
Do we have uh Ron Chalger also?
Um. I received correspondence from Joseph Cotta for one twenty Monticello, um. I didn't.
Talking about uh four seventeen Communal.
Okay.
Joe, Joe Cottas on him, I can promote him. Okay, uh, someone from the same firm. Uh, Frank, we see you. Uh, why don't, um, Chairman, do we want to address? Mr. Regan.
Sure, Frank's up. Let's hear Frank.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Um, hi.
Counsel, good evening. I apologize, uh.
It's, it happens. I understand. I've sat through it and listened and I, you've had a. Challenging evening, all of you. Um, unfortunately, I mean, yes, we'll, we'll consent to, to carry to, to March seventh, unfortunately. And, and this is not necessarily your problem, but I, you know, my client is operating under a, a, a deadline. Um, to get an amendment approved, then that's, that's subject to getting through the planning board and the council. You know, by the end of March, which they may not be able to accomplish having this carried. Um, but yes, we'll, we'll agree to. Um, but yes, we'll, we'll agree to have it carried and hope for the best.
I, I understand, Counsel, I apologize, um.
No need to, Mr. Chairman, you're.
We're gonna be next up on my list, I apologize.
You get it. Thank you very much.
All right, enjoy your night. Thank you for hanging in there. Ron is.
Uh, Ron, we see you there.
Yes, good evening, uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Good evening, Counsel.
Hearing on behalf of the applicant, four-seventeen Communal Oz. Uh, we will agree to carry, we certainly would appreciate being first on the agenda the next meeting. Uh, this is the second time we've been carried, so, uh, any courtesy you could give us would be certainly appreciated.
Agreed, Counsel, um. I think, I don't know if I can guarantee you first, but I will, uh, I'm making my life's work to get you on next meeting and hear you.
Thank you.
All right, Counsel. Good evening. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Uh, we have Mr. Gemma coming up. Oh, I'm sorry, Frank, there you are.
Uh, so, uh, Frank Agliardi, uh, uh, on behalf of the other side dispensary, um, in, in the same vein as, as everyone who spoke, uh, you know, we understand that the board has, uh, you know, uh, an obligation to get through these, these applications and, and get through them in, you know, uh, a timely fashion, so we appreciate everything. But, uh, in the same vein, if there's a possibility of us getting on the next meeting, we would, uh, we would truly, truly appreciate that.
All right, thank you, Counsel. We'll do our best for you. We appreciate it.
And, and the same, just preservation of notice as well.
Of course, and, uh, we will preserve notice.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, uh, Mr. Gemma.
Mr. Gemma, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for hearing me. Again, we consent to, uh, carry it until March seventh, uh, given our, given our cue, we'd ask to be behind Ron, so if that will possible, we, we understand we're on the agenda and we thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, Counsel, um, I, I'll regroup with planning tomorrow. Uh, tonight was a hit we didn't expect and, uh, we'll work through it, man. We'll get there.
Yeah, I know, been there, done that, it ain't pretty.
Yeah, I know, thank you.
Thank you. Take care.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. McCann, how are you? I, I'm not even looking, I hear your voice and I know it's you.
Yes, I already confirmed that I would carry my four cases, but two of them have been on the agenda. This is the second time that they didn't get heard, so I'm just gonna put in the same respectful request that they be placed on a place on the agenda for March seventh where they can get heard.
Understood, Counsel, I'll, uh, I'll work on it tomorrow, believe me.
And, uh, I really respect everything you guys do. This was a long night and you guys have a lot of patience and a lot of fortitude to handle all this. Thank you. Good night.
Just a Tuesday night for me.
Thanks, Jim.
Uh, all right, who do we have left here, Cam? Uh, Mr. Lean's joined us.
Uh, good evening, Commissioners. Um, I just want to echo everybody's statements. I obviously appreciate everything you guys do and it's unfortunate we didn't get through more this evening, but, uh, that's the process and, uh, everybody has their right to be heard and I'm, I'm glad that they do have their right to be. Um, I do have five eleven Newark, uh, and we do, uh, consent to the adjournment. Uh, Cam asked that I just, uh, go on the record to, uh, to state what I had stated in my email, which is I do just want to clarify that that, um, consent, uh, is in no way, um, agreeing to extend any statutory timelines. Uh, it is fully my intent and my applicants intend to have this application heard by the board, uh, and hopefully for approval. Uh, but, uh, it has been on the agenda since, uh, October, moved back a couple times to accommodate, uh, uh, community requests. And, uh, I, I just want to protect their rights and put on the record, um, that we're not consenting to, uh, extend any time periods.
Understood, Counsel, thank you. We appreciate it. Um, that's everybody.
Uh, thanks, everyone.
Um, thank you. Uh, we still have Mr. Harrington for, uh, uh, item twenty, P two-two dash zero-six-nine.
Mr. Cauter for one-twenty Monticello.
We, we got an email, sorry about that. Okay, so.
One-twenty Monticello also. I see Counsel on the monitor.
Okay, let's get to that and then I'll get to, uh, Mr. Harrington's application.
Uh, good evening, Counsel, good evening, Mr. Chairman.
And Counsel, good evening, how are you?
Good, thank you. How about you? Um, but doing a great job, um, just, uh, my name is Joseph Cauter on behalf of one-twenty Monticello LLC, and we'd just like to carry to March seventh, preservation of notice. And like many applicants here, this has been adjourned a few times and I see you guys got your hands full, so I'm not gonna fight with anyone.
Understood, Counsel, um, we'll, we'll get there, I promise, we'll get there. Uh, thank you, we appreciate it.
Yep. Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, this is Tom Lean again. I logged off right as you were saying Mr. Harrington's name. Uh, he gave me authority to adjourn all his matters as well. I just wanted to make sure that that was clear on the record.
All right, thank you, Tom, and, uh, we'll carry that also with preservation of notice to, uh, the March seventh meeting, that's gonna be some meeting too. Oh my God, Dios Mio, um.
March Madness.
It's. Not sure, did we get everybody here?
Yeah, we did, yes.
Whew, all right, uh, let's move on to memorialization of resolutions, please, Doc.
Did you say, did you say Dios Mio?
I said Dios Mio.
Man, this Spanish is great.
Oh, really? All right.
Bueno.
Doctor Gonzalez, there is one reso in there and it was under the presumption that, uh, Yale would get heard. So just, you know, when you see one fifty-one Yale, don't read that.
Uh, do you remember which number that was that I know?
Uh, let me pull up the email once.
Two-seventeen.
Thanks, Mike.
Well, two, yeah, but I'm looking for the nu- the number of the resolution here.
Number seven.
Number seven, perfect, thank you, guys.
Board is on it, man, I love you guys.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the following resolutions. I do have, uh, ten now. Um, resolution number one is of the City of Jersey City Planning Board, case number P two-two dash one-two-one. Applicant is Usher Le- Levy or Levi, address ninety-nine Arlington Avenue, Jersey City, New Jersey, block two-three-six-zero-two, lot four, decided on August twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two, memorialized on February twenty-first, twenty-twenty-three. And this was an application for extension of prior approvals. Resolution number two is of the City of Jersey City Planning Board, uh, applicant Consolidated Rail Corporation for Minor Subdivision Approval, Newark Avenue and three sixty-three Newark Avenue, Jersey City, New Jersey, block one-zero-nine-zero-one. Lots one oh nine and one twenty, case number P two-two dash one-four-one. Third resolution is of the City of Jersey City Planning Board, case number is P two-one dash one-four-nine. Applicant is three fifty-nine dash three sixty-one Johnston LLC, address at three fifty-nine three six dash three sixty-one Johnston Avenue, Jersey City, New Jersey, block one-seven-four-three, lot one, decided on Tuesday, December thirteen, twenty-twenty-two. This was an application for preliminary and final major site plan approval with a C variance. Resolution number four of the City of Jersey City Planning Board, case number P one-nine dash zero-nine-zero. Applicant was Andres Cortez, uh, address four twenty-seven Ogden Avenue, Jersey City, New Jersey, block two-four-zero-two, lot fifteen, decided on Tuesday, August eleventh, twenty-twenty-two, memorialized in February twenty-first, twenty-twenty-three. Application for a, uh, preliminary and final major site plan approval with C variance. Number five is a resolution of the Planning Board of the City of Jersey. Got that one, Doc.
Yep.
Uh, yes. So five and seven? Can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah, five and seven.
Okay. Got you, so the next resolution of the City of Jersey City for review and discussion of two-four-four Bay Street redevelopment plan allowing for the redevelopment and rehabilitation of a deteriorated vacant city-owned building that is historically significant and a contributing building within the locally state and nationally designated Harpsimus Co. Uh, this, uh, historic district, case number on that was P two-two dash two-two-four. Next resolution is of the City of Jersey City Planning Board, the applicant is JBT Developers LLC for Minor Subdivision Approval with Variances, address is one seventy-three dash one seventy-five Armstrong Avenue, Jersey City, New Jersey, uh, block two-five-six-zero-one, lots nine and ten, case number P two-two dash two-three-fives. And the next resolution is resolution of the Planning Board of the City of Jersey City approving an amendment to preliminary and final major site plan with deviations and conditions. Applicant is Monticello Equity, uh, Properties LLC for amendment to preliminary and final major site plan approval with deviations, property two-two-zero dash two-three-eight, Monticello Avenue, two-two-one dash two-two-seven Fairmont Avenue and four dash twelve Fair, Fairview Avenue, block one-five-zero-zero-five, lots one through sixteen. Um, with a case number of P two-two dash two-zero-seven. Next resolution is resolution of the Planning Board of the City of Jersey City approving a minor site plan, P, uh, the case number is P two-two dash two-one-four, submitted by Dish Wireless LLC, ten sixty-five Summit Avenue, block two-one-zero-two, lot four. And the final resolution I have is of the City of Jersey City Planning Board memorializing its review and recommendations with respect to the mixed-use academic building at fourteen Enos Place to be constructed by the Hudson County Community College.
Second.
Thank you, Vida, and thank you, Doc. I have a motion and a second. Could I have a roll call for resolutions, please? Yes, Chair, uh, Vice Chair Dr. Gonzalez.
Hi.
Commissioner Lipsky.
Hi.
Commissioner Dr. Desai.
Hi.
Uh, Commissioner Cruz is absent. Commissioner Gangdan.
Hi.
Commissioner Green. Commissioner Torres.
Hi.
And Chairman Langston.
Hi.
Motion carries on, favor to approve. All right, thank you. Please tell me, uh, nobody needs to talk about anything else tonight.
Cam, was there a Ralph four forty reso in there?
Good night.
Okay, all right, nevermind.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to.
I got one to talk.
Oh, can, can I just say one? Can I just say one thing? There was a gentleman, the gentleman who's translated. Uh, sir, please call us at the office, or you have your hand up, call me at two-zero-one Again, five-four-seven-five-eight-eight-three. Thanks.
He does pick up.
Matt always picks up. Matt always picks up. All right.
I like the fact that we have a question saying uh, to one of the callers that, uh, he's doing the Lord's work. That was pretty cool. I thought that was a nice, uh, comment by you, Chris.
You know, I mean, you know, right, Eddie?
Chair is doing the Lord's work.
Now, if you guys want to join now, go ahead.
He's mentioned those twice today, in Spanish and in English, I don't know.
I know, it's true.
I didn't expect that one today. I didn't expect that one today.
What, the Spanish? The Spanish?
Yeah.
Sound like Spanish.
But keep hoping, guys.
You have a resolution? You have a motion, Doc?
Yes, go ahead, you want to make it, Commissioner Lipsky, go ahead.
On behalf of our great Vice Chair, I make a motion that we adjourn this wonderful, uh, governing body.
Second.
All right, guys.
Adios amigos.
Step up with a second for that, I appreciate it.
Good night.
Enjoy, guys.